Big shout out to Mr. Greeley for making this work. There were internet issues at the library, so extra bravo to Mr. Greeley tonight. All right. Hello, everybody. It is Tuesday, February 9th. It is 6:32, and I'd like to call to meeting this Town Council Committee of the whole meeting. All counselors are present. Calendar and Communications, Counselor Baumgartner.
I do not have anything to report other than the Public Safety Committee met last week, welcomed our newest committee member, Counselor Franco. A very fruitful discussion with our police chief as well as committee members about the court recommendation. While expect a list of policy, proposed policy changes coming your way very shortly, your way being the members of the Town Council. So in the coming meetings or next meeting, we will be moving those likely recommendations forward. So again, I just want to thank the work of Counselor Bordelon and Counselor Heed and as well as Counselor Franco for the work on the committee. But as this is not committee reports, I will have nothing further to say. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Parker.
Nothing to report. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Franco. I attended the Safety Committee for the first time as a participant. And that's about all I have to report this week. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Heed.
Nothing to report, but just want to let everybody 65 years and older know that you are now able to book your COVID vaccine. So go book it.
Thank you, Counselor Heed. Counselor Aubrey.
Nothing this week. Thank you.
Counselor Bordelon.
Thank you. As other counselors had stated, I also attended the Safety Committee meeting, and that's all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Melendez.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I am, I'm actually happy to report that the DEI Committee is partnering with Parks and Rec to host a, an event honoring the memory of Rahim Carter, who has a park named after him in the town. It's scheduled for the 22nd at four o'clock in that park. And that, not all the details are worked out as of yet, but that's when and where it will be. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Melendez. Counselors of Perry.
No report.
Thank you. And the council attended a meeting, a joint meeting with the Board of Ed and the RTM as an introduction to the budget last Wednesday, April 23rd. And there's just preliminary discussions going over some of the background materials, and that meeting was recorded, and it should be available online if anyone in the public is interested in listening. Thank you. We are on to approval of minutes. 2021-92, January 26 minutes and February 2nd, 2021 special meeting minutes. Counselor Baumgartner, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the January 26, 2026, 2021 minutes and the February 2nd, 2021 special meeting minutes. So moved.
Second, Franco.
Moved by Baumgartner and seconded by Franco. Any discussion on the minutes? We have two sets of minutes, so if you're going to make a correction or a notation, please give the date for town staff to be able to go back in if necessary. Okay. We will vote. 2021-92, January 26th and February 2nd special meeting minutes. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Heed, any abstentions?
No, I was, I was in favor.
Oh, I'm sorry. Delayed reaction. Nine in favor, moved unanimously. Thank you very much. All right, so new business. We are at 2021-66-FYE-2020 CAFER. This started on page 12 in your packet, and we do have a motion for this. So Counselor Parker, I believe. This would be on page 13 of the original packet that came out.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
I make a motion to recommend a resolution to accept and file the FYE-2020 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report CAFER, the auditor's reports and management letter. I so moved.
Second, Franco.
Moved by Parker and seconded by Franco. Thank you, Counselor Parker. All right, so this evening, we have with us several people to present the CAFER to us. We have Finance Director Landry. We have, I'll let her introduce the two members of the staff, and then we have two auditors. So I will yield the floor to you, Director Landry, to do the further introductions.
Am I unmuted now?
Yes, you are. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Tonight I have joining me Dee Morrison is the Deputy Finance Director. I have Vanessa Rizzito and Elena Clausen, who are, who handled our audit this year. That was done by Blum Shapiro. You'll see in my referral that Blum Shapiro is now, has joined with Clifton Larson Allen, and I'm sure that they will speak a little bit about that. And I also have joining me tonight Mary Gardner, Assessor, which will, she'll be here for a different. As you know, the state statutes and the charter both require that the town appoint an auditor and perform an annual audit, and this is the audit for the CAFER. We actually do a comprehensive annual financial report that we submit to the GFOA for their award. And as I said, Blum Shapiro completed that audit, and at this point, I'll turn it over to both Vanessa and Elena. I think you have the presentation that they're going to go through, and they'll be open to any questions at the end. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Cindy. This is Vanessa. Just if somebody could say that they can hear me, okay, that'd be great.
Yes, we can hear you, Vanessa. Welcome.
So I'm Vanessa Rizzito. I'm the Audit Principal in charge of the audit. I have with me Elena Clausen, who is the Audit Director. So we're going to go through the presentation. It doesn't seem like we need to share our screen, so we don't, won't go through that task. I think you all have the presentation. So I'll just start on Slide 2, which is the agenda. So just to summarize what we're going to talk about tonight, I'm going to go through the terms of the engagement, what the town hired us to do. I'll go through a tree top executive summary and also some financial highlights. I'm going to turn it over to Elena, who's going to go through the federal and state single audit and also the management letter. And then I will finish up talking about the required governance communication to, to your board and go through some upcoming GASB pronouncements and talk a little bit about the merger with Blum Shapiro to CLA. See a hand.
Counselor Bordelon, I was just wondering if it is possible to share it just because people that are watching from home, it might be just nice to be.
We can do that.
Thank you.
Somebody, I think Elena can share if somebody wants to give her the power to do that.
Mr. Burke, can, are you taking care of that?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'll just wait.
Should be set.
I think I'm sharing. Can you guys see?
Yes, thank you.
Awesome.
Okay, so, so that was the agenda. So moving on to the terms of the engagement. So the town hired us to express opinions on whether the basic financial statements are presented in accordance with generally accepted principles. Also to issue, issue and in relation to opinion to the schedule of expenditures of federal awards and also the schedule of expenditures of state financial assistance, otherwise known as the federal single audit and the state single audit. We also express an opinion on the compliance related to these federal and state award programs. Okay, next slide. We also provide a report on internal control over financial reporting and compliance with laws, regulations, contracts and grants, and also a report on internal control over compliance related to the major federal and state award programs. So as far as the results of the audit, we have issued an unmodified or a clean opinion on the financial statements. This is the highest form of an opinion that you can receive. It basically means that everything is fairly stated in accordance with our accounting standards. And we did not have any findings over the financial statements on internal control and compliance. So those are all good results as far as the financial statements. Just a summary about the federal single audit, which Elena will go into a little bit more detail later on in the presentation. We've issued an unmodified or clean opinion on the major federal program tested and also no compliance findings or significant deficiencies in internal control over compliance. And similarly, for the state single audit, we issued an unmodified or clean opinion on the major, major state program selected. And again, no compliance findings or significant deficiencies in internal control over compliance. So just some, I included some slides with some financial information just to, you know, talk about the results of the fiscal year. So this slide presents the full accrual basis of accounting. So these are all of the funds of the town aggregated together and brought on the full accrual basis, meaning that all the capital assets of the town are presented here. All of the long-term liabilities such as bonds payable, your pension obligation and your OPEB obligation are also presented here. In addition to the normal categories on a balance sheet, which are assets, liabilities and net position, we also in government accounting have two additional categories, which are deferred outflows of resources and deferred inflows of resources. So I'll just go over the, the category. So the assets, if you look from 2019 to 2020, did increase from 322 million to 409 million. That's for a number of reasons, but the town did issue a number of bond issuances. So there was more cash available to the town. Also, the town did have a lot of construction projects in process. So capital assets did increase about $50 million. So that, those are the reasons for the increase to the assets. As far as the liabilities, I did mention that the town did issue a couple of bond issuances. So that accounts for the increase in the liabilities from 2019 to 2020. And then net position went from a, because of the, the changes, if you will, in assets and liabilities, net position increased from 145.7 million to 174.5 million. As far as the deferred outflows of resources and deferred inflows of resources, those are mainly a result of your pension and OPEB liabilities. When there's changes in those liabilities, the, the standard doesn't account for those changes from year to year. It actually does amortize those changes over a couple of years, be it four or five years. So that, those are what those categories represent. Okay, just to talk about the general fund a little bit. Fund balance of the general fund at June 30th, 2020 was $28.78 million. Of that amount, 20,000 is non-spendable. 1.48 million is assigned, and the reasons for the assignment are listed below. So 784,000 is for encumbrances. 337,000 is for revaluation and 359,000 is for technology, leaving 27.3 million unassigned at June 30th. And then to look at the budget of the general fund, this statement presents the original legally adopted budget and then also the final budget after any transfers or additional appropriations. Then we present in the third column, the actual results. And then the fourth column is the variance, which is from the final budget to the actual results. So there were no differences in the original budget to the final budget. Maybe just some transfers in line items, but on the, on the total budget, there were no changes. As far as the variance column, revenues at June 30th came in 1.4 million dollars greater than budget and expenditures came in about $2 million less than budget. And I know this slide is a little bit small, so I apologize for that. I don't know, Elena, if there's a way that you can make it a little bigger. I don't think so. Sorry about that. So this slide, of course, my dog has to drink water in every presentation, so I apologize for that. So the general fund is one of the major funds of the town. Also, the capital improvements fund is presented here. The smaller funds of the town are aggregated together into the third column, which is the non-major governmental funds column. So just looking at the general fund, the change in fund balance from June 30th, 2019 to 2020 was 2.7 million dollars. In addition to the normal operations of that fund during the year, we did have a bond refunding of 9.98 million dollars, which is accounted for as revenue in the general fund under governmental accounting. In addition to that refunding, the town did receive a premium on that issue of 1.2 million dollars. The capital improvements fund did have a decrease in fund balance of $14 million. And that is mainly because of timing in a capital projects type of fund. There are obviously a lot of capital outlay expenditures. So we did have an issue, a bond issuance this year of $20 million, together with a bond premium of about $3 million. So there is a small deficit in this fund at June 30th of 831,000, but I know there's plans in the future to fund that with future debt service. And then the, the non-major funds had an increase from last year to this year of 1.3 million dollars. Okay, and then just to talk about your pension trust fund and your OPEB trust fund. So these are the funds where you set aside assets to fund the, these liabilities. So the pension fund during the year had contributions of 5.3 million dollars. Actually, very positive result to your investments. Net investment income of 6.7 million dollars, which is great after all the market fluctuations that happened in 2020. So total additions to this fund was about 12 million dollars. And then you had benefits and administrative expense of 9.3 million dollars. So you did have a positive change to the net position of 2.8 million dollars from 2019 to 2020. And then the OPEB trust fund had contributions of 5.7 million dollars. Investment income of 510 million and deductions, which was benefits, again, benefits and administration expense of 3.9 million. So again, a positive change to the net position of 2.3 million. And then lastly, I think just some financial highlights that I thought you might be interested in. In 2020, the property tax collections were 99.01% compared to 99.09 in the prior year. So again, very comparable, especially with the strange year we had last year. So I think that's, that's great. Your pension liability, your net pension liability is 25 million dollars. This is made up of the total pension liability less the assets that are set aside in the slide I just explained previously. So the pension plan is 82% funded and your OPEB liability is 35.3 million dollars, and that is 38.8% funded.
I'll turn it over to Elena to go over the federal and state single audit.
Thanks, Vanessa. So as Vanessa mentioned, as part of the audit, we also perform a federal and state single audit. In terms of the federal single audit, there were a total of 9.7 million dollars of total awards expended. The major program that we tested was Impact Aid, and we issued an unmodified opinion on major program compliance, and we had no compliance or internal control findings. For the state single audit, the total awards expended were 53.5 million dollars. The major programs that we tested were bus operations, reimbursement, towns' tax loss on state-owned property and municipal grants and aid. We also had an unmodified opinion on major program compliance, and we had no compliance or internal control findings. This year, we also issued a management letter. We had two recommendations noted in that letter, the first being around the transfer station cash collections. We recommended that the municipality develop formal processes and controls over the cash collection and revenue recognition at the transfer station. Additionally, we also recommend that the town consider installing a camera to record the transactions and ensure that the collections are being properly handled. Our second recommendation, which was also included in last year's management letter, is to perform a fraud risk assessment. We recommend that the municipality perform a risk assessment to identify, analyze and manage the risks of asset misappropriation. This fraud risk assessment can be formal, which would mean being performed by an outside accountant or consulting firm, or it can be informal, performed by a management level individual who has extensive knowledge over the town. And now back to Vanessa for the auditor's communication.
Elena, so this is a required communication from the audit firm to those charged with governance. There's a couple of things that we are required to mention. You were provided the letter in your packet, but I'm just going to kind of go over, you know, summarize some of the highlights. So during the, the year, we did not adopt any new standards. Actually, GASB did put off implementation of all of the standards due to COVID. So there were no new standards adopted during 2020. However, there are a lot of standards that will need to be adopted. I'll go over those later in the presentation. Your financial statement, along with every financial statement, really has estimates. So we are required to disclose to you what the significant estimates are. We are required to look at these to ensure there's no bias whether management is trying to increase or decrease these assets to manipulate the, the results of the year. So useful lives of capital assets are used to calculate depreciation. There is an estimate for the allowance of uncollectible receivables. The town does utilize a actuary based upon management's assumptions to calculate both the net pension liability and the net OPEB liability. The town also utilizes a third party to estimate the medical claims that are incurred but not reported, also heart and hypertension and workers' comp liability. And also a third party to calculate the landfill post-closure monitoring liability. So we looked at all these estimates to ensure that there, there was no management bias and that these estimates were fairly stated. The audit did go very well this year. You know, considering everything that we had to deal with with COVID, I know there were a lot of changes in the town finance office, new system, et cetera. But everybody was very responsive. You know, we did not have any difficulties, no disagreements with management. Management not, did not consult with any other accountants. There were no uncorrected misstatements, and we are independent of the town. Okay, so last, I guess not last, but second to last, there's three slides here on the GASB standards that are applicable in fiscal years '21, '22 and '23. I'm not going to go through each one of them. I'm just going to touch upon, there's actually one each year that will impact the town. So for next year, Statement 84, fiduciary activities, you might, for those of you that were here last year, might remember me talking about this one. Again, the GASB delayed implementation of these. So this is slated to be implemented this year. It is a new definition of a fiduciary activity. So what we're going to have to do is look at the fiduciary activities of the town to ensure they meet the new definition and also do some inquiry to make sure there are no other activities of the town that do need to be brought into the financial reporting entity. In 2022, the, the statement that is going to affect the town is 87, which is the lease standard. So this standard basically is requiring any operating leases, whether it be rent that the town is paying or rent that the town is collecting to be accounted for on the balance sheet, similar to a capital lease. So again, I did talk about this last year. So we're going to need to work with the town. The town is going to have to inventory all of their operating leases. I should say the town and the Board of Ed and really all the departments inventory their operating leases to see if, if they're material and they're going to have to be brought under the standard. And then lastly, in 2023, their Statement 96, which is actually similar to the lease standard. This is for software agreements that the town is paying for on a monthly or quarterly or annual basis. Again, it's sort of the same thinking as the lease standard that, you know, the town is paying a fee for this, and what's going to have to happen is this is going to have to be brought onto the balance sheet as an asset and a liability. And then just a couple things about the Blum Shapiro merger with CLA. Just if anyone is interested, just wanted to, you know, give a couple thoughts about this. So effective January 1st, 2021, Blum Shapiro merged into CLA, which is Clifton Larson Allen. It's a national firm, has about 120 offices throughout the United States. It's about 10 times the size of Blum Shapiro. But really what intrigued us is that it really has the same values and culture as Blum Shapiro. And CLA was really not in New England. So it really made sense because they're really looking for us to continue what we've been doing in New England. So our clients are not going to see any real drastic changes. The, you know, the teams are still going to be intact. The same folks that are servicing your audit are still going to be servicing your audit. It's just really a positive change because there's a, a lot more resources available to our employees and to our clients. CLA does have a significant government practice. They are the largest auditor of states in the United States, and they have about 3,500 government municipal clients. And our contact information is here. Should you have any questions after tonight, please reach out to us. And our contact information is here. Should you have any questions after tonight, please reach out to us. And then I will turn it over for questions for either myself or Elena.
Or Mr. Burt, did either of you want to say anything before we open up to the council?
I don't have anything.
No, I don't have anything to add.
Okay. Are there any counselors that have questions?
I had one question if I could find it.
I have counselors Oprah and Bum Gardner.
But Andre, go ahead, please.
Okay, very good. You have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you so much for your comprehensive presentation this evening. Ms. Rosito and Ms. Clausen. I'm reading through the, the CAFER now and I was, I saw that we had a growth in capital assets and it was curious as to what that growth is attributed to.
This is Vanessa. I don't have specifics to that. Maybe Director Landry or Elena. I don't remember what specific projects were involved in, in the capital outlay.
I think it was a school project, excuse me. To the Groton 2020 plan, we had expenditures for that project.
Thank you. And, and that's my, that was my only question.
Okay, Counselor Oprah.
I can't find exactly where it was, but it was pertaining to the retirement funds. And we seem very good on the people that have been retired. I'm just wondering if the money is for the oncoming people that will be retiring. It seems kind of low.
So perhaps you're talking about the, the pension that is 82% funded and the OPEB that's 38.8% funded.
Right. Thank you. Yes, exactly.
So I'll try to explain this a little bit. And I see this with a lot of my clients, if that makes you feel any better. The pension liability, I feel like there's more, how shall I say, focus on that to fund that. The OPEB, OPEB stands for other post employment benefits. So these are the retirement, health retirement benefits for your, for your retirees. It also is measuring what the liability is going to be for your current employees. So it's, it's a little bit different than the pension. But I do see that in, in a lot of my clients, that the pension is more funded than the OPEB plan, just because the focus has been to fund that pension plan. And OPEB, the measuring of the OPEB liability and the reporting of it came after the pension plan. So that really wasn't the focus right away.
Do you think that'll increase from the future?
I think that's, that's really up to the town where they're going to commit the resources. I would say, you know, it's a good conversation to have with the actuaries of each plan, what, what the best thing is to do.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Are there other questions? I'm getting lots of echoing, so I apologize if the rest of you are getting it or if it's just me.
I'm getting it.
You are? Okay. Counselor Franco.
Yeah, I can hear the echo as well. So when I reviewed this, it, it talked about the transfer station and the collection of money and how you had commented on possibly putting cameras there, but maybe I'm under the understand, the wrong understanding. I thought only money for the transfer station was collected at the annex, not at the transfer station. Is that correct?
This is John. I believe the passes are sold at the annex, but day passes, you could pay cash at the transfer station.
Oh, I see.
I, I do, I know you can, because I just did it.
Okay, because I, I usually had an annual pass, I see. And Ms. Landry, what do you think of what you can implement more for the fraud risk assessment from, you know, from your viewpoints?
We, this has been a repeat in the, I'm unmuted, right?
Yes.
In the, from the auditors for a couple of years now, and we had looked, when it first came up, we had looked at it and about bringing in a firm, which back then, several years ago, was $30,000 to $40,000. And it was our plan to try to do this internal, with internal staff last year, but as you know, we had a lot of turnover in the finance department and we're trying to implement a couple of new softwares and it just, we just did not have the time. I, now that I have the deputy on board, I would hope that in the upcoming year, or at least in the next 12 months, that she and I would be able to put something together and to go out and visit the departments and maybe address this comment for the next year's audit.
All right, that sounds good. Thank you very much. Overall, I, I was looking on the additional pages that were sent to us. And it stated that I believe overall revenue was down by half a percent. Is that correct? And can you go over just briefly, like what, what you've seen as to why?
Well, for June, as of June 30th, revenue was over budget.
So I, I received one of the pages from the town manager. Hold on, it was on, hold on. I'm sorry. It was also like, or it was like on page five, I believe it was one of those documents where like, I was reading your, your notes and your, your letters stating about like long-term financial planning and like even about how to raise the unassigned fund balance and how we have policies to raise it up to 15%. And
Is, John, is that from the finance committee?
No, it's, um, I, I, maybe you weren't aware, in the agenda packet, some of the documents were locked and could not print, so it's, it's auditor documents.
Okay, it's page five of the audit?
Well, there were like six documents.
Right. I think you're looking at the, either the letter of transmittal or the management's discussion.
It may have been. I know, I'm sorry, I don't have the right page.
Yeah, I apologize that we didn't realize that those documents were locked and were not, were not accessible to you.
Could you tell us what page you're on in the overall page of the agenda?
That's what I'm looking for at the moment. I know one of the, one of them was page four, when it discusses long-term financial planning. And I'm looking for where it had basically the grand list decreased by a half a percent. I'm sorry, that's what it was.
I believe the, the grand list.
That's on page five.
Page five of.
Their presentation or?
No, it's in the documents that were sent to us separately from the town manager. It's number 2021-66 attachments, the first one.
Yeah, I couldn't get those to download. Thank you.
Okay.
It's a single audit report.
It was the single audit report? I apologize. I'm, I'm trying to find the page. I know that.
Sorry, it might not be. I saw the 66, but there's multiple.
I'm thinking that page five was my letter of transmittal and that's where the grand list was, the decrease in the grand list for October 1 of 2019.
Yes.
And most of that decrease was related to the depreciation of personal property assets at Pfizer and EB. That was the majority of that decrease last year to the grand list.
All right.
Because we had, they're on a, you know, depreciate, they depreciate every year, even, you know, as they age. And, okay, I see that. Let me just take a look. I think that long-term planning was right underneath it. And that's where we just talked about how much the unassigned fund balance was 20.9% of the 21 adopted budget. And it stated that, that our current policies between 11 and 15%. And I'm, what was your question?
So that was, so the long-term planning is for us to go up to 15%. That's in our policies. And that's what I wanted to just confirm. And so the actuaries can actually come in to give us advice on where we should be compared to credit agency reporting, correct?
I'm sorry, there was an echo. I have a question.
Yeah, I don't know what's going on. The actuaries come in and give us advice on where to be or the credit reporting agencies on what percentage the long-term unassigned fund balance.
It's usually the rating agencies when they're, when we want to go to market that look at your fund balance and have, you know, a range of percentages that they'd like to see.
And do you know when we would, when would be the best time to, to get that information from them?
I can try to see, I don't know if they actually publish it and I think it may be different for different parts of the country. But I could see if I could get, if there's been an update by Fitch or Moody's or S and P from our financial advisor.
Okay, that would be great.
Right, because they had, I'm sorry.
I apologize, because they had talked to us previously that where we should sort of be around. And I just wanted a more up to date because I had put a referral in to increase it to 15. But 15 is just a, a, basically a placeholder to have discussion in the future on that number, I think, and exactly where we should be.
Right. If you recall back in, I believe it was 2017, when we had revised the debt policy. And at that time, we had a seven and three quarter, which we knew going to market for the schools, that that was not going to be very advantageous to us. So we had increased it at that time. And going from the seven and three quarters even up to the 11, at the time, we thought was going to be a, a much more difficult undertaking. But we, as you know, we had a couple of good years where we had some additional excess revenue primarily related to Impact Aid that helped us get that percentage up.
Right.
But I will talk to our financial advisor and see if there's any other information, because we will be going back to market in, in April again for the schools.
Okay, that'd be great information to have. Thank you so much for everything and it seems like you're doing a very good job. Thank you.
Thank you. It's a team effort. Thank you.
Yes, it is. But thank your whole department. Thank you, finance.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sorry to interrupt, but Sean believes there might be an echo from someone having their phone on speaker. So if anyone has their phone on speaker, please take it off. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. That's great. Thank you for the tip. All right. I'm not seeing any other hands. I'll look one more time to see if there are any other counselors that had questions or comments. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor for 2021 66 FYE 2020 CAFER. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously. Thank you very much. I think that's, I'm not sure if Director Landry's staying around for anything else, but thank you, Ms. Rosito and Ms. Clausen for coming out this evening.
Thank you.
You too.
Thank you. All right, so we are on to 2020 893 Municipal Coronavirus Relief Fund Request. And I believe this is Counselor Franco, please.
I make a motion to recommend a resolution authorizing submission of reimbursement request for COVID-19 related expenditures from March 1st, 2020 to December 30th, 2020. I so moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Franco and seconded by Heed. And Mr. Burt or Director Landry, who would like to talk to us about this?
Sure. This is Cindy Landry. I'll jump right in. As you know, back, it hardly seems like it, I mean, I can't believe it's been a year ago, that when the coronavirus hit, both the federal and the state came out with relief efforts for the municipalities. And we had filed for both FEMA dollars, which we did receive, as well as the state Corona Relief Fund. There were two submissions to the state that we, we submitted for and we did receive. But one of the requirements for the state is that the council adopt a resolution authorizing submission to the state OPM for this reimbursement. So that's what we're here tonight to just ask that the council authorize that submission. The state did have, has agreed that they know that the towns were having to do this after the fact because it was so quickly to have it all done by the end of December. So they do recognize it'll be done after the fact. Because this, this middle date was December 18th. So if anyone has any questions?
Very good. Counselors have questions for Director Landry regarding this particular item? All right, I'm seeing no hands. So we will vote on 2020 893 Municipal Coronavirus Relief Fund Request. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
I'll see you a little later.
Okay, that's right. I forgot. All right, so we are on to 2021 47 Economic Assistance Fund Update. This was on page 41 in your packet. There is no motion here. This is an informational item, I believe. Yes. And we have with us this evening, Mr. Reiner, Director of Planning and Development Services, and Mr. Bronk, Economic Development. And I will turn it over to them unless Mr. Burt wanted to say something prior to his team speaking.
I don't have anything.
Thank you. Mr. Reiner, you have the floor, sir. Thank you for being here.
Oh, thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. John Reiner, Director of Planning and Development Services. And again, with me tonight is Paige Bronk, our Economic and Community Development Manager. So we just wanted to give a brief overview of our, the Town's Economic Assistance Fund. We often get questions about some of the different programs and assistance that we do through our economic development program and through the Office of Planning and Development Services. And this is one that's been around for a number of years and is really just a, a great model. And it serves as a grant program that we utilize for businesses that are growing, expanding and locating in town to help pay for some infrastructure costs associated with that new development, when there's going to be a large increase in the grand list from what was post or what existed on the property to where it is now. And this is a program that both Paige and Sam Eisenbeiser, our Economic Development Specialist, manage very well and have done a lot of work on it over the years. So I don't want to steal any of Paige's thunder on this, so I'm going to hand this over to him. He's done some great work on this.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Council. I, we do get questions about the Economic Assistance Fund and we are attempting to broaden people's understanding about the program. It has been heavily used and it is probably the most impactful and significant incentives that we use when people come in and are interested in opportunities or investment in Groton. As John said, it really operates like a local grant program. Obviously, it's publicly funded and it deals with a one-time financial assistance reimbursement for public infrastructure improvements or business development expenses associated with business opening, relocation and expansion in the town of Groton. And it is important to understand it's a reimbursement. We've been asked in the past, well, what's the risk to the town? If the developer does not fund or build or finance the infrastructure in accordance with what was proposed, we don't reimburse. And there is a pretty significant process we go through in ensuring that they have the appropriate documentation, specifications and that contractors have indeed been paid for this work prior to our release of the funds. So there is a memo that the COW has before them. I think I'll touch on a few more highlights under the background section. That first paragraph is taken from the intent within our guidelines. The guidelines document for the Economic Assistance Fund was recreated back in 2017 and approved by the council. It added more clarity at that time, but at the same time, more flexibility. The original program was for traditional infrastructure. So for example, if a developer wanted to extend a water line or a sewer line to the end of a road to create development, that clearly was an original intent. But, but we've basically added some flexibility. We now allow things such as stormwater lines or lateral that'll cut across the private property that goes to connect to the front of a building. Or possibly for a micro business just starting out, some pre-development costs we might include as well. So it's not simply the traditional anymore. We're really trying to help where there's the greatest need. So back to the intent, I would like to read that one paragraph just so people understand. Taken right from the guideline document, "The town of Groton seeks to support businesses which are opening in, expanding within, or relocating to the town by assisting with costs related to business development or infrastructure. The intent of the fund is to facilitate the development and expansion of businesses that will stimulate the local economy by creating and/or retaining jobs, increasing tradable sectors of the economy, and/or supplying goods or services that meet a specific community need. To this end, the town has established a fund for construction of necessary public improvement, public infrastructure improvements, and some pre-development costs associated with business development and expansion." And then there's reference to the guidelines. The guideline document, I believe, was provided as well, is roughly three or four pages long. We typically provide that to applicants. That process, by the way, entails initial conversations with an applicant where we'll find out are they possibly a candidate for this type of incentive? How strong is the project? Once, once we find out whether or not this might be an appropriate tool, they do fill out a final application. Often, the application, we do encourage them to ask for what they need, even if it's a high number. You know, if they need a certain amount to help them with the project, we do ask for that number. Not that we're going to necessarily recommend a funding, but it gives us a starting point. Also, it helps us understand what their need is relative to total project cost. Eventually, we'll continue having our conversations, try to refine their application. When it gets to a form that's acceptable, then it moves through the town manager's review and understanding. Also, the Economic Development Commission, who has a committee that will assist with the review. Ultimately, it goes to the EDC for full review and vote. And then finally, it comes to the town council for their ultimate and final decision on the request. This is not an arbitrary determination that's made in reviewing this. The guideline document does have criteria that we use. Number one, first and foremost, we're going to evaluate the scale of the project. We're really interested in knowing what the post-improved estimated or projected taxes are going to be. We work closely with the tax assessor at that point in time. And the size of the project clearly has a bearing on how much we would entertain for any potential reimbursable grant. The maximum, the maximum we would ever entertain is twice the value of the post-improved annual taxes. We rarely get close to that, but that is the most as allowed by the guidelines. Other criteria that we would consider within the memo, it must increase the local tax base. It must create and/or retain jobs within the town. And the project must conform to current zoning regulations and the most recent plan of conservation and development. And we're very much focused in trying to entertain projects that are within our desired growth areas. Those are primarily our commercial or downtown areas. The last point that I would like to touch on is the status since 2016. We've, we've recommended a number of awards, and the council has entertained a number of awards, which are provided to you in the table attached to the memo. The total funding request from those was roughly $767,000. The total award made by the town council since 2016 was roughly $285,000. So, simple math, that's about 37% of the total ask. So we clearly do not provide 100% of the requests. As a result of the projects that have been awarded to date, the fund balance is at an all-time low at this point in time. It's $134,000. I would like to refer to the attached table, which highlights some of the projects. We have a total of six projects. The Gabriel's Apartments, CrossFit Ingas, Grand Wine and Spirits, Sift Bake Shop, Villages at Bluff Point, and also the Standard Apartments. And those projects illustrate the pre- and post-improved assessed values. Also, the pre-improved annual taxes in comparison to the post-improved annual taxes. The second from the right column shows the amount awarded. And then the last column, the date that it was awarded.
May I interrupt for a second, please? I'm not seeing the chart. Was it included in our packet? Am I just missing it? Do other people have it? I am looking at page 42 is where the item ends. And then pages 43 through 45 have a lot of background information, which is very valuable, but I don't see a chart, so. I don't.
I'm actually not seeing the chart also. Somehow it got cut. So that's something we can certainly forward to you. I apologize.
Thank you, and I apologize for interrupting. Thank you.
I apologize as well. I presumed you had it before you. So I'm going to try to generalize the information at this point. And maybe that'll be helpful when you do have that single-page chart before you. I think the largest takeaway really is what is the return in investment to the town since we're operating this local grant program? And the simplest way to really calculate the return on investment is to look at the pre-improved tax value for the property versus the post-improved tax value for the property. And the increases are pretty significant. I think on the low end, according to my calculations, the, the lowest increase in property value is 58%. An increase of 58%. Most of the projects are hovering closer to 100% increase or slightly above 100%. And we have two projects that actually exceed 1,000% in an increase. So I think the return is fairly significant for us in light of how much we provide relative to the overall project cost. We're providing a small amount, but it's an important amount because it actually leverages these high-quality projects that translate to improved infrastructure, private investment, public-private partnerships, expedited construction schedules, and ultimately grandlist growth. So I think I'll conclude at that point. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have one counselor who has her hand up. Counselor Bordelone.
Yes, I was just going to ask if it's possible, can the slide be uploaded on the screen here?
Give me one minute. I'm actually in the process of emailing it to John Burt, so give me a second.
Okay, yeah, because I was just going to say it wasn't in my packet either. My, my one question is, so this is open up to folks within the town boundaries? So business in the city would not be able to apply for this? I just wanted to just double clarify, you know, some people say Groton Town, and they mean all the different things engulfed, and some things are included. But in this, would that include the city and other outside areas or no?
It would include.
It would.
Yes, it would.
Okay, so like Tiff, like the Tiff districts or Thane Street in the city could benefit from a project like this? And utilize.
Certainly, Thane Street could benefit from the Economic Assistance Fund.
Perfect. Thank you.
Counselor Franco?
Thank you. So we've seen many of these projects come through, and we've voted on them and awarded them. And I think they're great developments, and they add value to our town. And so I believe this is a very important fund as well. So my question is, how much are you looking in funding to replenish this account in the future?
So this is John. We actually have a proposal in this upcoming year, CIP, to put some funding in that line item. Again, I could tell you in a minute what that request was. Tonight, we weren't asking for money or asking for anything. We just had some questions from people about some of the different programs that we do, and we thought this is a good one to talk about so people know the positive impact of this fund and how much we've used it in the past few years. And it's really been something I think that's been of great benefit to the, to the community.
Oh, I agree. I, I see many people discussing things on social media about how things should change in our community, and they want private owners to do something about it. And I think as a government, we can't force them to do it, but we can always offer incentives. And some of, you know, tax abatements or TIFs or this grant. I mean, these are ways to help people to change, to make changes in our community. So I think it's wonderful. And I think these are, this is how government can help.
So in the next fiscal year, we're asking to add $50,000 back to this fund through the CIP and asking for $50,000 for each year in the, in the future.
Okay, thank you for giving me those numbers. I appreciate that.
Yeah, no, thank you.
Counselor Baumgartner?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Paige, for your presentation. I've had the privilege to support many of the projects you alluded to or mentioned, as have many other counselors before you tonight. You know, again, have had the privilege of supporting these projects that obviously have paid dividends. You know, our small investment, you know, when you look at SIF, for example, has brought so much positive vitality to downtown Mystic. Even at the beginning of the pandemic, when many storefronts in Mystic had closed down, many of those storefronts have filled up and were replaced by successful restaurants and businesses. And I think that obviously is a testament to the entrepreneurial spirit within our community, but also the hard work of your department. So I just wanted to thank you both, you and John, for your efforts. And the only question I have is, I, it appears to me that in more recent years, the scale of many of the projects that are funded by the Economic Assistance Fund has, has grown. And the investments the town is making have, have increased, and correct me if I'm wrong. And, but, and that's okay. My question is, in the future, should the town change existing criteria for certain businesses to qualify for economic assistance? I know in the criteria, it's mentioned that at least, I believe, five jobs must be retained or recruited or created in order to qualify for any form of assistance from that fund. I'm wondering, is that something the town should look at in increasing for certain projects? It made me, you know, so feel free to answer that question. But again, thank you both for your efforts.
Thank you. I think that it's wise for us to always revisit our programs, guidelines. And the last time we had made changes is 2017. I think that is a valid point. It is true, the last two projects we had are larger than others, and maybe, maybe we should take this as an opportunity to go back and make sure that we are on target and we're addressing the scale of the projects that we desire. I think small, medium, and large is great, but they're not all equal. And maybe we need to make sure that we are appropriately targeted, particularly since this has been an attractive incentive, and our fund balance is been decreasing. Obviously, resources are finite, so we need to make sure we're, we're doing the best we can. I think we're doing very, very well at what we're dealing with, but I believe possibly we should go back. This is a good time to reevaluate and see if it's the best it can be.
And one quick follow-up question, Madam Mayor, if that's okay?
Yes, you have about a minute left.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Quickly, Paige, you mentioned, and thank you for your answer. In the future, would you look to the council to, I know you're facing the lowest balance you've had since the fund was established, a little over $100,000 currently in that fund, assigned fund. My question is, is that something that the council should be cognizant of? You know, when we're voting to approve your budget in the months to come? You know, I think it's, you know, very valuable to have this fund. And obviously, it has, again, has paid dividends and, you know, in terms of tech, tax revenue the town receives. But is that something your department will look to, you know, for our council to maybe up or provide additional funds so it is solvent?
I think the simple answer is yes. John may have something that he wants to add to that as well, but we, as we evaluate the CIP projects annually, we're always looking at the Economic Assistance Fund and knowing it's a really beneficial tool for us. This year in particular, it's become more critical for us. But I think we have always, over the past few years, looked at this fund and wanted to add more funding to it. John, do you have any further comment?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was going to, too. I reviewed the CIP today. I was just going to add that. Yeah, I got my first initial review. I think you asked for $50,000, which I think is probably too low. But at the same time, we have about $8 million or $7 million in requests and about $3 million to spend. So, go ahead, John.
Thank you. So I was just going to weigh in. In years past, we have asked for money for this account, but we've known, we've had a lot of tough budget years. So when there was still an adequate amount of funding in the account, we said, you know, we can defer. We'd like to start replenishing it in small amounts, but we can wait. And last year, we knew the numbers were starting to get lower, but there was a lot of uncertainty with the economy. So again, we said, you know, last year, let's wait. But as we're moving forward into this year, I think it is important for us to look at funding this account moving forward because for such a small investment, it really has done a lot on return for, for what it is.
Thank you, John Squared and Paige.
Thank you. I'm going to ask a question, then I'm going to ask the manager to share his screen. Start my timer. Many, many years ago, when this fund first started, there was quite many, many years ago, when this fund first started, there was quite a bit of money in it. And I was always hesitant to, to support it, um, because it was not clear of the over, the level of oversight that is given when this money is awarded. And I think you did a really nice job tonight, um, informing the public about the level of oversight and how many layers that, um, a, a requestee has to go through in order to qualify for funding. And I think you've done a really good job with telling us as well, uh, the kind of benefits that we can see. So I think this would be a good time for Mr. Burt to share his screen while I ask my question because I think this is the chart we were gonna talk about. I was curious, um, if you could just let the, um, the public know. You said two of them have exceeded 1,000% and the, the value that has increased. Um, and most of them are around 100%. If you could just let the council know or let the public know, uh, which businesses we're talking about so that when the public is, you know, driving down the street, they're like, oh, that's what that money does. And we can, we can see a tangible associated with this kind of philosophical discussion. And I'll pause there.
Sure. Um, I'll just touch on these quickly then. And, um, if there are further questions, we can handle it appropriately. So the first one, um, and I'm reading each row left to right. Gabrielle's Apartments at, uh, 1028 Paquonic, 13 apartments and pre-improved taxes that were paid, uh, roughly 16,000. Post-improved taxes, uh, forty, almost 44,000. And we had awarded for that, um, $24,300. The next project, CrossFit Ingas, uh, which is at 90 Leonard Drive. It's on the right-hand side, um, when you, when you first start going down Leonard Drive. Pre-improved value on that property, it was vacant, uh, was $5,800. Post-improved, um, almost 14,000. The third project, Grand Wine and Spirits, I think most people are aware of that, um, 255 Route 12. Uh, that is, um, basically a 26,000 square foot, small retail plaza. And the annual taxes prior, it did, it did have a structure on it previously. So, um, the pre-improved was roughly 37,000. Post-improved, uh, about 59,000. The fourth project, Sift Bake Shop, I'm, I'm sure most people are aware of that. And that's at Five Water Street. And the pre-improved value was about 17,000. Post-improved value, approximately 31,000. The fifth project, The Villages at Bluff Point, at 10 Fort Hill Road, uh, construction of 19 apartment units. The pre-improved value, uh, was vacant land for the most part, uh, was about, uh, 5,500. And the post-improved value, 69,000. That's a fairly substantial jump. The last project, The Standard Apartments, downtown Mystic, uh, Three Water Street, uh, mixed-use building with 14 housing units and a little over 6,000 square feet of commercial. The pre-improved value taxes was around 15,000. The projected post-improved value is almost $225,000. So I think that gives a scale on what I would say is the return on investment for us. And that's, that's just one year, uh, annualized. So really, we're gonna gain the benefit from the post-improved value year over year over year. So that number is gonna compound for the town.
Thank you. And I, what's nice to note on this is that, um, I know one of those was a, a local builder. Family lives in town. At least two others have been in the community for several years. So it, these are, these are local people that are benefiting, um, from this. And in turn, then the whole community benefits from the development. And if you're looking at it purely financially from a tax-based perspective. So thank you for, um, presenting this chart. That's, that's most helpful for us and, um, for listing off some of the businesses that have benefited from your program. All right, let's see.
Thank you.
I'm sorry?
Uh, this is John. If I can make one other comment, it actually follows up a little bit on the last thing that you had said there about some of the local businesses. So what's also been nice is that a number of these, um, developers or businesses that have gone through this either existed in one place in town and moved somewhere else or first invested in the town and then saw what opportunity there was here. For example, with the Sift Bake Shop. And, you know, when we did this award, that was on a major renovation of a building that he had already occupied. And then some of the other, uh, developers that are, uh, have done these types of projects were actually in, either in conversations with them, um, or they have other properties under, under option to do more development because they've seen the success of the things that they've done in town. And now they wanna put their time and investment into other structures within Groton that need help. And that's something I think we've had trouble with sometimes is getting people to invest, especially in some of our growth areas, you know, um, downtown Groton, Paquonic area. And when people start getting into repeat patterns of reinvesting in those areas, that really shows a great success of some of these, you know, Gabrielle's Apartments. He wants to do more on that property. So th- there's a lot of good things happening.
Very good. Thank you so much. Um, Councilor Bordelone has her hand up. Are there any other first-time speakers who wanted to go on this? Councilor Bordelone, you have the floor.
I, the chart was very helpful. I just have a couple of questions. Um, I think it's, it is important to fund this account. Um, and, uh, it'll be great to see what we can do to support it. Is there any look towards any grants possibly that we could look towards in the future to help support this account in any way?
I'm not aware of any programs, um, currently to establish or refund something li- like this. You know, Paige, myself, our office, we always have our eyes out and peeled for different options. And if something did come up, we'd certainly go after it. I'm not aware of anything. I don't know if you are, Paige?
I am not. Um, one of the beauties of this is its relative simplicity and local control. And I know it does require an allocation, um, from, from the town. However, when we're relying on state and federal monies, it often becomes, uh, significantly more complicated. And we don't necessarily have the ability to, uh, manage the program in a way that we best believe it fits here in Groton. So that would be, that would be one concern. And back to what John was saying, we're always looking for grants. But I think it would be difficult for us to find a grant to fund our local program. People generally would say, if you have a desire for a local program, you should fund your local program. Uh, it's not easy to get supplemental monies.
Thank you. So my other couple, um, questions or, uh, process that I was going through as I was listening to this, um, and looking at the chart, um, maybe in the possible rewrite or revision of relooking at like what was established before. Is it possible that something could be written in? Once again, I'm not saying it has to be, but is there anything limiting, limiting us from looking at, say, those annual increases, right, where there was like 15,000 or 20,000? After a year, writing in our, the new write-up or revision, maybe like a percent of that increase in the first year would go back into this fund, not the full 15,000 or 50,000, but maybe just like a percent or whatever council, future councilor, whoever, decided to take a percent or two of those increases of revenues to help reallocate it back into this fund. Um, so that's my one question of thought process on that. And the other thought is, um, is there the flexibility to, since it is locally run and town established? Can the beneficiaries and companies or, or whoever, um, benefits from this fund? Is, we don't have to ask them to, but could it be written in here where if a company decided, you know, if I opened up a, a business and I benefited from this and, um, you guys gave me 25, 30, 50,000 dollars? And then you made another 30,000 dollars in taxes? And then you decided in that one year that you're gonna take 1% to put it back in this fund, which would make sense. But then if I wanted to, i- if it said it somewhere in the contract, if you're able, you know, if I was able to give a thousand or 50 bucks even, or who knows, I'm feeling great that year, I can give 2,000. Could I then donate back into this fund to help other entrepreneurs reinvest and, and also benefit from this? So those are the two questions I have. Thank you.
This is John. I, I can jump in quickly. The, on the first question, uh, you know, I think where the council takes money from to replenish accounts, that's something I, I think is just, you know, to our annual budgeting process. Um, on the, the second question, Paige could also jump in on this one. But I, I think that's something, um, we could certainly ask developers that, you know, once they're beyond that, uh, maybe first couple of years, a sticky time of expansion that, you know, we don't require it, but, you know, as part of a good deed, we'd have always encouraged them, you know, in a couple of years, if they're having a really good year, to think about donating something back to this fund to, you know, show good faith and seed money towards other businesses that are trying to grow and expand in Groton. I think that's a good suggestion.
Uh, thank you. And my, John, uh, to the town manager, is there a way that the council could, not maybe this council, I don't know with time or whenever, um, but is it, is it possible or is there anything set up in the town where if we wanted to, say, in that first year, hold 1% of those funds that are the increase, um, in, to be held over and allocated, um, into this account? Is that something in the future that could be discussed or is it impossible?
I think it could be discussed. I think Cindy would, you know, definitely be one we'd wanna confer with. I don't think there's any reason you can't do it.
Okay. Because it just, and, and I think this is great. I think, you know, as I was sitting here looking at this, I just thought, well, how can we make this grow? And make it kind of like a, a community effort? And, you know, as one business grows, another one benefits and then another one can benefit from it. And I think it is important, as I look at those numbers, that it's nice to see the, the increases that we receive. But it would be nice to say and make it a town priority that 1% of that 20,000 or 30 or whatever each increase was, um, reallocated back and a way to secure that so that, um, you know, I think a 1% of, you know, some of those numbers wouldn't be a lot. But over time, it, it would help the, the fund flourish and it won't seem like a large impact later. I think as the, you know, the grand list grows.
Councilor Bordelone.
I'm sorry?
Your time is up.
Okay, I'll close my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, as the grand list grows, it's important to, um, you know, see in ways that we could reallocate those. So thank you for giving me the time to speak.
Are there any counselors who wish to speak for a first time before we go to second time?
Nobody.
Councilor Franco.
I have a question, jumping off what Councilor Bordelone has brought up. Is it possible to possibly put, I guess, when you pull a permit for, um, for building anything in, in the town, um, to put maybe a, a small percentage, maybe even a half a percent on the permit for an economic development? To go towards an economic development fund and either, um, town beautification or for a fund like, like to add to this fund or anything to help, um, enhance our community? Um, is that even a possibility?
So, uh, you're asking, is it possible for us to add, um, uh, kind of a, a fee onto the building permit? Or other applications that would help replenish some of these?
Yes, or even to, for beautification of our town or
Yeah.
things that would enhance economic development as well.
I, I think the simple answer is I don't know. And let me do a little bit of research on that one.
Right. It, even if it's just a small fee that just could be, you know, would generate more to help us, that would be wonderful.
John?
Okay.
Hi, this is Cindy. Can I just, um, jump in here for a minute? Um, John, do you have, um, fees in lieu of open space going this fund already?
Uh, fees for lieu and open space, that is usually dealing with actual subdivision applications. And then that would go directly into, um,
Open Space Fund.
The Open Space Fund through the CIP. And that is something that's authorized through, uh, Connecticut General Laws and our subdivision regulations. I know in, in the past, and, you know, in many states, there have been, uh, court cases about building permit fees and them being too high and not relating to the actual process and application. So I wanna do a little bit of digging into that particular issue and looking at some of the, uh, the litigation that's happened in the past regarding building permit fees before we started attaching a, a kind of a, a secondary user fee or, you know, or a secondary fee on top of that, which I think is, is a great point. And I think would have a lot of benefit for whether it's beautification, whether it's replenishing the Economic Development Assistance Fund or something else. But let me do a little bit of digging into that one.
Right. And that's why I'm asking, because I'm not exactly sure what the legal implications are and what isn't, is allowed and what isn't allowed. And there's all these statutes. And so that's why I'm just asking, and not that I wanna tax anymore, but I, I think there's a great call in our community to try and update things and, you know, sidewalks and all kinds of other things. And, and just the look of our town, especially on the Groton downtown, what I would consider Groton downtown area. I mean, there's just a big calling for, from Quonic Bridge all the way down to Hamburger Hill. I mean, there's just a big outcry of people wanting things to look better and to be better. And I'm, I'm just trying to figure out a, a solution to that. So thank you for checking that out and looking into it for me. Thanks.
You're welcome.
All right. I don't see any other hands. So then, thank you gentlemen very much. I'm not sure, um, who's staying around for the building fee item. But thank you so much for enlightening us on that. And we will look for that in our CIP. We are on to 5D 2020 807 Building Fee Refund Policy. And this is on page 46. And I have to see who moved the last item. This is Councilor Heed.
All right. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll make a motion to recommend a resolution to approve the refund policy as requested via a resolution.
Second, Franco.
Moved by Heed and seconded by Franco. Uh, Mr. Burt, who will be introducing this and, um, discussing it with us?
Uh, John Reiner here. Uh, I'll be taking the lead on this one.
Very good. You have the floor, sir.
Thank you. Uh, again, John Reiner, Director of Planning and Development Services. So, uh, in the town of Groton, the way that our building permit fees are set is actually the, although there is a, a section in the Code of Ordinances that goes over the fees and has fees, those fees may be amended by a resolution of the council. We don't need to have a public hearing and actually amend the ordinance. So I just kinda set that there as some backdrop. So we realized that there was no, um, written formal policy dealing with building permit, uh, refunds. The only instances where we really give, um, refunds now is if, uh, people apply for something and then, um, the project doesn't happen. It's just nothing, uh, and nothing moves forward. Or if, um, somebody applied and, um, twice, which has happened before, some instances like that. And what we're looking to establish here is there are instances where people apply for a permit. We actually start going through the review process, taking up time, uh, valuable resources. We have, we, we have a lot of applications coming in, uh, to our permanent, uh, Inspection Services Department. And to make sure that if people are pulling out halfway through and we've already done reviews, that we actually have some funding, um, to, uh, basically to take care of the time that was spent reviewing that application. And I, I think, you know, the, the memo that was provided is pretty straightforward, uh, and kinda sets out, you know, the, uh, kinda three standards that we're looking at, you know, the partial refund on qualified projects. You know, this encourages applicants to pursue the completion of their projects in a timely manner. And then also, uh, provides the department with, uh, some revenue in accordance with levels of professional services rendered.
Thank you, Mr. Reiner. Did Mr. Burt wanna add anything to this?
No.
Thank you. Um, Councilor Bordelone? Thank you. Counselor Bordelon, you have the floor.
Thank you. So the fees, then you're saying there's no current fees or numbers to match these off of, these would be just a new standard?
Correct. This would be a new standard for refunds.
Okay. And where would this money go into the, this, this intake?
So it would still just go into, so right now, all of our building permit fees are collected into a building permit fee account. That is a just a revenue account. Hopefully I'm using the right wording, Cindy. And the money would stay in there just minus, so whatever, anytime we refund someone for a building permit, the money just comes out of that, that bucket. This remaining, these basically processing fees or fees that would be kept if a certain amount of review has happened, or if an inspection has happened, they would just stay in that same account.
Right. That's correct. If you were to refund, when you currently you refund the full amount and this you would be refunding a prorated amount. It's not an additional fee. It's just you're not giving back 100% of the fee.
Okay.
Thank you for saying that so much better than I could, Cindy.
No, you did a good job, John.
Thanks.
All right. I think it makes a lot of sense. I mean, I think at the time and everything. Is this something that can be allocated into our, that other fund we just spoke about if it was said so?
Again, let me do a little bit of research on that before we start allocating funds from one thing to another. I want to make sure we're in a legal clear ground to do that.
All right. Because I just think if there is any positive revenue over time and that other fund is suffering and this is building permits and they're all kind of due mesh in one, it might be something that, you know, it could go into there. So just a thought. But thank you for explaining this.
Thank you.
Counsel Franco.
Thank you. So a processing fee of $20 minimum or 50 cents per $1,000 based upon the estimated cost would be applied to all permit refunds, whichever is greater. So as you're speaking and you're saying that there's a lot of time and effort sometimes put into these, is $20 minimum? Is that a good number to start at? I mean, I can understand if somebody's putting in something small like, you know, a permanent shed or maybe a pool or something of that nature. But if you have a giant, huge building permit is, is 20, like, starting off at 20, is that good enough?
Yeah, I think so because the $20 would probably apply to, like you said, something, a small shed, a very small project. Whereas that 50 cents per $1,000 based on the estimated cost, that will add up relatively quickly, but it also won't be an exorbitant amount of money. And that's just for taking an application in, but not actually doing any type of plan review, just kind of going through some of the administrative steps. If there was some plan review that has started, that's when it would jump up to that $2. So again, it's making people think about applying for what they're doing and making sure the services that are rendered are paid for. And this was something that my manager of inspection services.
Experience of plan permits?
Oh, sorry. I was just going to say in talking with the manager of inspection services. Am I breaking up?
There's a lag.
Sorry, maybe I was talking too fast. In talking with my manager of inspection services on this, he thought that these rates were adequate rates and he was comfortable with moving these forward.
Okay. And it also says if a permit has resulted in at least one onsite inspection, a refund will be issued. And I will tell you that you probably won't have any refund issues because you guys are on top of things and you guys are like, I pulled a permit and you guys are out there right away and check things out and to help give me guidance right away and to look at my property. So, which is a good thing. So I appreciated that. But thank you very much.
Thank you. And thank you for giving some positive feedback to the inspectors. They do a really good job.
Counselors of Perry.
Well, I was, I lowered my hand after this. This is kind of superfluous remark, but I heard people talking about, well, we could use that money for something else. This isn't money that's coming in. This is money going out. And we're retaining some of the reef, the fee that we had taken in previously, but not all of it. So we're not getting richer by this, but we're getting more honest. And I think it's a good idea to refund to someone who has run into tremendous difficulty with a project and is thereby in financial straits, to the extent that we can honestly refund some of the money we've taken from them. I think it's a good idea.
Thank you. All right. I see no other hands. So we will vote on 2020 807 Building Fee Refund Policy. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Have a good night. Thank you for coming out.
Thank you. Good night.
All right. So the last two items, we have, they are listed as separate items. So we have 2020 4321, we are revisiting this tax abatement for seniors, disabled and veterans was on page 47 in your packet. And town staff is looking for direction from us if we wish to pursue this further. This ties somewhat to the last item. There is not a motion there either. This is also a tax abatement item. We need to discuss the two items separately and provide direction as they are two separate agenda items. So this was Counselors of Perry's original referral. And I will yield to Counselors of Perry to begin discussion on this.
Thank you. I think it's, it's a good idea to see what we can do to one, honor our veterans and our cousin current rate of honoring them with a $1,000 reduction in their assessment amounting to about a $20 or $30 cash improvement into their situation for the year is not really honoring them. I think it's more more of an insult than, than actually a gift to them. I, I, I think that there are people who are disabled and have difficulty paying their taxes. And there are elderly people on fixed incomes whose incomes do not go up while our tax spending and our spending and our tax do go up significantly every year. So I think it would be a good thing for us to take care of the elderly and, and the disabled especially. And the veterans need better recognition than we're giving. Now, there's a comment in the, in the agenda that simply states that what we can do in tax abatements is controlled by state law. It would be far more helpful in discussing this if we actually had a look at the state law that staff is referring to. So before we went on with this, I would ask the staff to gather the state laws that govern what we can do for abatements. I understand that there are programs for tax and for tax relief already in existence. But I think we should look at these. I also understand that there are people who are struggling with the taxes as they are. And I think we need to get control of it.
Mayor, this is John.
Yes, just a minute. I just wanted to make sure Counselors of Perry was yielding the floor before.
I should say I yield the floor.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Burt, did you wish to address Counselors of Perry's request for the statutes?
Well, what I was going to say is we have Cindy Landry, Mary Gardner and Melissa McGuire here. They know all the, they put in your packet, all the guidelines on the different programs available. I thought if they could give a quick overview, very brief overview of what we, what's available, what we have and any options we have. They're very versed in what's allowed.
And we've done this before. This will be the second time we went through what has already been done. And it, and it was a very impressive presentation the first time. Are we going to do the same thing now?
Well, they can tell you what options we have on each one, if you just want to do that.
Well, I'm asking for the actual statute so that we can see what we can possibly do as an initiative from the council.
So may I interject for one moment? In, this started on page 48 and it runs through to page 60, I believe. Within those 12 pages, is there a reference to what Counselors of Perry is asking?
Hi, this is Mary. Good evening, everyone.
Hi, thank you for joining us.
I don't have the entire packet, but I do know what was part of the packet was an Office of Legislative Research document that does list the statutes with all the programs that are available. It's called Local Option Property Tax Relief Program for Homeowners.
Where is that in the program? Can you tell us?
I'm, I don't have the entire package. I just have that section. So I'm not sure.
Where is that? The Taxpayers Guide to Assessments and Property Taxes? Or is it different?
It would be different. It was, it was a 2019 OLR document. I think it was part of the package. Cindy was, you know.
I know it was part of the August package. I don't know if it was part of this latest one.
I don't see it in there, but I can forward it tomorrow to the council.
Right. I'm not seeing the OLR document in here. Is there, is there, so to go to Counselors of Perry's very specific question. So then do we have the statutes in this particular document that's in front of us tonight?
Yeah, we don't have copies of the statutes. No, we do not. I, I don't think that we realized that that was what was Counselors of Perry was looking for the actual statutes. I did not realize that.
Okay. So Counselors of Perry, since this was your referral, what's your pleasure on this, sir?
I would put it forward to the next. I would ask to put it table it to the next committee of the whole meeting.
Is that a formal motion, Counselors of Perry? Okay, postpone to the next Cal?
Yes.
Is there a second?
A second, Heed.
Moved by Zeperry, seconded by Heed. All right. Any discussion on the postponement? I don't know if we can discuss on that. Rules people, is that a discussion item? Move to postpone is discussion or not discussion?
What is the question again?
To postpone this, is that debatable? Postpone, second, debatable. Yes, it is. So yes, it is debatable. Anyone wish to debate postponing this to the next Cal? I would, I would just ask that because this was Counselors of Perry's request, his referral. And he is the one that would like it postponed. I think it would be thoughtful of us to, to grant that to him if, since it is something that he asked for. Counsel Franco.
I think we should go forward with discussion. We have town staff here to be able to answer questions that are, that can pertain to those, you know, get answers from them and pertain to this topic. I mean, town staff is here and prepared and ready to go forward. So I didn't see any emails requesting that documentation from town staff to take something fully off an agenda and move it to another one. Because something isn't here for one counselor, I think we should just move forward with discussion. Thank you.
Counselor Bordelon, you have the floor.
Thank you. I'm, I'm fine with postponing it for the, you know, efforts of just having the proper information that Counselors of Perry is looking for. But is there a way to postpone it, but maybe just to ask a few questions that people have prepared based on the information that was in this packet before, or is it a full postponement? That, that's the only question I have, but I'm fine with postponing it in its entirety if that's the wishes. But I didn't know if we could ask the few questions on the documents that we have before, since town staff are here.
If we refer postponing it, everything would be postponed till the next meeting. So what I would say is if it is determined that this body wishes to postpone, you might want to get your questions documented. That way we have them ready to go for the next time.
All right. So we're going to be voting on if we want to fully postpone or at least discuss some of the items tonight. Okay, thank you.
The motion is to postpone to the next Cal.
Okay. And if that fails, then we would discuss what we have in front of us and then talk about it at the next Cal anyway?
No. We would not be talking about it at the next Cal. It would be tonight.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome. Counselors of Perry, this will be your second time. Are there anyone else that wishes to speak for the first time? Counselors of Perry.
I just want to make it clear that we're told that what we can do is limited by state statutes. And we're deciding and exploring the idea of what we can do. Before we can do that, we need the state statutes. So I want to make it clear, the purpose of the postponement is allow staff to get us the specific statutes that they're referring to. And then we can make some judgments on that basis.
Thank you. Counsel Franco has her hand up again. Is there anyone else who would like to speak for the first time? Counsel Obree, you have the floor.
Yeah. In, in our announcement here of what we're going to be doing, it says it should be known that tax abatements in Connecticut can only be enacted when specifically allowed in state statutes. I think unfortunately, a little bit of research should have been done in order to be able to clarify that tonight, actually. So we're a little unless Cindy or Mary could share with us what they know overall, if they're comfortable to do that. And if they're not, then I think we should leave it for, for tonight and move on to the next thing that we have.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak first time? Counsel Franco.
So Ms. Landry and Ms. Gardner, can you speak to the state statutes and give us advice and what they are pertaining to? If there are specific questions?
No, that's, right now, we're debating whether to postpone or not. So we can't go to that right now. So the debate right now is on whether we're postponing or not. And that's a council decision. That's not a staff decision. So we have to make a decision based on where we are right now. All right. Counsel Bordelon, second time on this. Go ahead.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So my question is, are these state statutes something, once again, it's a decision if we want to move forward, but my question pertains to my decision on how I vote. Could the staff pull up these statutes off the website? And if we voted in favor to discuss this tonight, is this something that can just be pulled up off the state's website?
So right now, we are trying to decide amongst ourselves whether we want to postpone this or not. That's what we need to vote on.
Right. And that's what I'm trying to vote on.
And this is what we've already asked staff. If they had these things available, they do not have them available right now. There's a motion on the floor and we are going to be voting on whether to postpone to the next Cal.
Okay, I was trying to finish my sentence.
So right now, the discussion should be on whether we're postponing or we're not postponing.
Thank you for speaking over me and saying that as loud as you could. What I was asking though is if we vote to continue tonight, then, because the vote could go that way. Then we would continue without the state statutes and that would be what we have to do. Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
All right. So I'm not seeing any new hands. So we will vote on.
I'm here.
I'm sorry. I didn't see your hand raised.
I'm sorry. I didn't put it in the queue.
That's okay. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I totally understand Counselors of Perry's frustrations in wanting to have written state statute. However, However, if I'm not mistaken, they've already provided as much information they could by highlighting the exact programs offered by the municipality with respect to the, what is allowable by Connecticut general statutes. The only statute that would determine what type of tax abatement programs we can offer is Section 12-124. That's outlined in the packet that we received. There is no information that staff will be presenting a week from now or two weeks from now that they cannot present tonight. I, again, understand Councillors of Perry's frustrations, but I do not believe if Cindy Landry and Melissa McGuire and our tax assessor are here, they would mislead us about tax abatement programs and mislead you in terms of what possible options we could explore so that we can fulfill your interest in providing tax relief to seniors, veterans, and disabled. So I would implore councillors to reconsider this. Let's move forward with this item. I think we, the staff is here to present to us tonight rather than delay. So I would implore my councillors to vote against this, but I would also ask Councillor Zeperry to respectfully withdraw his motion. That way, we don't have to vote on this.
All right, I'm going to call for a vote on this. All those in favor of postponing to the next COW, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye, Melendez.
Zeperry? Melendez? Granatowski? Aubrey? Those opposed, please raise your hand and say no.
No.
Bordelain? Bum Gardner? Franco? Heed? And those abstaining?
Parker.
The motion to postpone fails as a tie. Four in favor. Zeperry, Melendez, Granatowski, Aubrey. Four opposed. Bordelain, Bum Gardner, Franco, and Heed. And those abstaining, Parker. So we are back to this particular item. One vote. Is there a discussion? Councillor Aubrey, did you wish to speak?
Yeah, I was going to ask a little bit about this additional vet program. If, if somebody could cut, I read it, but it was earlier and I apologize for the fact that it's not right in my head right now. So how much of a deduction do they really get? Does it depend on their income? Is it dependent on, you know, if they're working? What are the, some of the criterias that actually can make a difference for a veteran? Or is it just that they've served?
Is this the item on page 54, Councillor Aubrey, so everybody can?
I got 220, 255.
Oh, because you're in the big packet. Does it say at the top of the page, did you know about additional vet programs?
Yeah.
Okay, great. So your page is what, 2, say again?
255.
All right, and I have it on 54 if you were in the original packet, so everybody knows where we are. All right, so I'm not sure, Director Landry is going to take that?
Actually, I'm going to allow Mary to talk about that. Most of these programs start in the assessor's office.
Thank you. Good evening again. Yes, this is Mary and, sorry.
Can we just put that up on the screen? Can we put it up on the screen for the people at home to see as well, please? Mr. Bird, do you have that? Or does?
I don't currently. I can get it a couple.
Thank you. Ms. Gardner, did you wish to go ahead and speak?
Certainly.
Mr. Bird is readying the document. Thank you.
Sure, thank you very much. The veteran benefits, it's like a layer cake. There's many layers to it. The base layer that Councillor Zepury referred to of $1,000 is true. That is a benefit that's not reimbursed by the state of Connecticut, but mandatory for anyone who's served 90 days continuous service in the military. Years ago, the state increased that by 50%, so an additional $500 assessment exemption is allowed for a total of $1,500, not reimbursed by the state. Years ago, the state also opened up an income-based program which doubles the base amount. So you would take your base $1,000 exemption and you would double it to an additional $2,000 based on an income amount. These programs, we do administer, we do take applications. Right now, we have about 260 total veteran applications in our office of that 92 are based on the income-based program. Years ago, I, I want to say the early or maybe mid 2000s, Groton adopted a local option program based on income. And that allows an additional $10,000 exemption. And right now, as of the 2019 grand list, we had 107 applicants for that, that were approved. We'll probably have about that many for the 2020 grand list also. The Veterans Program is open, the Application Program is open from February 1st to October 1st, so we have a long ways to go before we close out that, that benefit or that program. You know, I, I have the application numbers. I don't have the breakdown of what the benefits were applied in front of me right now, and I apologize for that. The statutes that allow for this are, actually, I have the statutes for the elderly program, not the veterans program in front of me, and I apologize for that, too. But these programs right now with COVID are open to the public, but the governor just recently issued an executive order allowing for an automatic reapplication for all of these applicants. And so we're not quite sure how many new applicants we'll receive this year, but it wouldn't be surprised, I wouldn't be surprised if, you know, we, we ended up having, I don't know, at least close to 500 total for all the veteran programs that we administer. So a taxpayer can actually qualify for both the state benefit, which is the 1,500 plus the additional 50%. And if their income is at that level, they can also qualify for the local program, which is the additional $10,000 benefit. So I know it's, that's a little choppy, but you know, I can try to answer your questions if you have any for me.
All right, I think Councillor Aubrey had her hand up.
Yes, I have two questions. One that I know some people have run into in the past. I don't know if it's still valid, but one of the requirements is honorably discharged after, after serving 90 days during a period of conflict. You know, there's some people that were in the service and never were during, you know, it might have been after Vietnam and before Afghanistan or, you know, a situation like that. Does, does that count? Does that still a, a regulation?
Yes, it is. And the state definitions of defined war periods is very, very, I wouldn't say it's restricted, but it is something that we look at very closely. We look at every DD 214 discharge that's recorded in land records. So that we can determine if that military person qualifies for the veteran benefit. So there are times that we have to tell someone that they do not meet the state requirements for a veteran benefit through the assessment process.
Okay, and the other thing is when you say that they would have an exemption, I will say $1,500, does that come right off? Let's say they owe $10,000 for their taxes and would that lower it by 1,500?
No, it is an assessment reduction. So it is the assessment reduction times the mill rate. So for a $1,500 veteran exemption, it's about $35 in tax if you combine the town mill rate with their district.
So it really is, when you get down to the bananas of it, it really isn't very much of a deduction.
The basic veterans exemption for Groton is not very much of a reduction. And every time we do a revaluation, we have to certify with the state how much our grand list has grown and there are metrics. If it hits a certain percentage of growth, we have to automatically double those veterans exemptions. Some towns, the exemption is up to, you know, $3,000 or, or $4,000, but Groton has never hit that threshold, so it's unique in that way.
Yeah. What is, what, may I, Madam Mayor, ask another question?
Yeah, you have a minute 45.
Wow. Have you ever heard of anybody just saying, well, we're going to, we'll do that, but then the town is going to say, look, for our veterans, we'll actually lower their tax bill?
Well, that really is what the town voted on, and I'm sorry, I don't remember quite when, maybe in 2003, to offer the additional local option veterans program, which is where we have probably about 300 people that, or families that qualify for it. And that program is based on income. The income limit is set at $25,000 higher than the normal income veteran program. It's that layer cake again. And that, that's a substantial reduction. That's close to $300 a year in tax reduction, if not more.
Can I just add, this is Cindy. On the, the page that is shared on the screen, that's the difference, two and three shows the different income limits and, and the additional option of the 10,000 is number three. And number two refers to the, what do I want to say?
The state program.
Right.
Thank you. I was reading my notes, Cindy, not looking at what's on the screen.
I just happened to look up and see it, Mary.
So you can see on, on number two, the income limit is quite a bit lower. And these are our current income limits. So the state program says a married couple, their combined income, including social security, is at $45,100 max, and a single person's at $37,000. And then if you go down to number three, it would be for the local option veteran program. Your combined income is $70,100, including social security for a married couple and $62,000 for a single person.
Thank you. I'm sure my time is up.
Thank you, Councillor Aubrey.
And I just want to add one more thing if I can. Technically, we are still considered to be in a war period with the Desert Storm War. We have many, many younger people coming through on that number three category on this sheet. Younger couples. Sometimes they're both veterans and they both qualify for the benefit. I, I would give you the example, last year for the income program on the state level, we had 92 applicants, which is that number two. For the local veterans program, we had 167 applicants.
If I may, Madam Mayor?
Yeah, you, you actually had time left, Councillor Aubrey.
Okay, well, but I just want to say thank you, because last year when we were discussing this, we felt that it wasn't being exposed to enough people. And obviously, that has changed, so I want to thank everybody that participated in getting more people to know about this. I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillors of Perry and then Franco. Councillors of Perry, you have the floor?
I just want to know from Cindy Landry and Mary Gardner, what is the maximum allowable tax abatement for a flat tax abatement without special circumstances for a veteran under the statute?
There, in addition to the layer cake of veteran benefits that we're talking about right now, there is an entirely different schedule of veteran benefits depending on percent of disability. If you have a disability rating through the VA, that 15, I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's not my question. Is, under the statute, we're giving $1,000 for anybody that has served in these times. What is the maximum amount we could get, abatement we could get under the statute?
I think, I think for Groton, it's 1,500 is the base amount. If you're not going to consider any injury or anything else.
Do you know that, or is that, you're guessing at this point?
Well, my, my thoughts are going to all the different opportunities for veteran benefits, but if you're just talking about the basic veteran, someone who served 90 days military service during a war period, and there's no income requirement and there's no injury, then it's $1,500.
And that's what the statute allows, or is that what we've decided to make?
Oh, it's always by statute.
It's, that is what the statute allows?
Correct.
Does the statute require that?
Yes, it does.
Okay. And there is no option to increase it under the statute?
There are options as the local option that the town has already adopted, which is based on income. I believe that's the only additional benefit that the town can opt for.
I'm not certain of that. I, I sure would like to see it, so that's the only reason why I wanted to postpone, but that's, that's a horse that's dead right now. The thing about any movement on the part of the council to do more to benefit the veterans is going to depend on the council's understanding of the statute. Otherwise, we're sort of dead in the water.
Mary, can I ask what the additional exemption for wartime veterans is? That one does go up higher. What's the, the, who are the qualified wartime veterans? That goes up to 20,000 or 10% of a property's assessed value?
Are you talking about the?
Under that sheet that Cindy referenced, additional exemption for wartime veterans?
Can I, can I speak? Yes?
Yes, please.
Mary, he's referring to the local option that we already took, that the town opted to do the 10,000, but it says you could go up to the 20 or 10% of the assessed value. So that would require them to modify the local option, correct?
Correct, thank you.
You're welcome.
I could bring that sheet up. It'd take me just a minute, but if that would be helpful. It lists all the, the laws and an overview of everything available.
Was this also in the packet, Mr. Bird?
No, but I've, I've got it just about up. If you gave me one minute, I could get it up if you wanted it.
Councillors of Perry, you had time left, or have you yielded the floor and I can?
I yield the floor.
Thank you, sir. Councillor Franco? You have the floor?
For full disclosure, my father is a disabled veteran who has reaped the rewards of option three there, the local option. And I wanted to ask-
And I wanted to ask if, with full disclosure, do, is, should I act out of participating in this, or is there a conflict because it is my parents?
Is that Ms. Gardner? Can you answer that question, or?
Counselor Franco, are you talking about opting out of the discussion? Because your father is?
My father is a disabled veteran, and my mother and father own a home in Mystic, and they use option three. And as a close family member, for full disclosure, I'm actually, I believe John Burt, or even, I'm not sure exactly who, for conflict of interest, I don't want to participate if I shouldn't be.
No, even when there's a conflict, you just need to go on record stating it. So you're, you're free to participate.
Thank you.
You were asking if you should opt out of the program. You're talking about opting out of the debate, right?
Debate, correct.
Yes.
All right, so can my time start now? Because I just had to clarify that before I could go any farther. Or does my?
I have to get the, I have to get this thing started again. Give me a second and see where we are.
I have to say, I had no idea how to answer that, so I didn't want to go there.
I thought, I thought, I was asking, should she take her, her house out of the program now? All right, you have two minutes and 44 seconds, Counselor Franco, go for it.
Thank you. So on action number three, with the $10,000 exemption from your assessed value, so are you saying how far, far, high can we go with that? Is possibly 20,000, a certain percentage? What exactly are you stating?
So you, you can change that local option program. The town council would, would have to revisit this. Instead of allowing an additional $10,000 of veteran benefit, you could go up as high as 20,000 or 10% of the property's assessed value. Based on income.
Based on income.
Correct.
And so that is something we can change. Number two is something that is more of a state statute that we cannot change, but three, we can. So I'm going to make a note of that, that that is something that we can change and go up to 20K or 10%.
Mr. Burt, I mean, I'll stop for one sec, I'll stop your time. Can you make that larger so people can read it, please? If you just go up there, there you go. And then we'll restart.
Okay.
And also, so this is, this covers, so this covers the veterans, the page that we were looking on originally for options one, two, and three. And it also, on this topic, is for seniors and disabled. So what can we change, or maybe increase or enhance pertaining to those?
Cindy, would you like me to pick up here?
Yeah, I was just going to say that what, what is on the screen now is the OLR, which was the Legislative Research, that are local options for towns. And Mary, correct me if I'm wrong on any of these. And the town has opted to take, for, this is page one, the town currently uses, we have opted in to take the deferral of taxes exceeding 8%. We also have the abatement for taxes for the poor. And going to the veterans, going down to the veterans. Those, I believe, are the only options that the town has voted to do, the first under the veterans.
So we can do the other. So we can freeze a senior's taxes and maybe only increase by a certain percentage, because I believe somebody had scrolled by that, if we chose.
Right, these are all the, what are optional programs that the town can do.
Okay. And we have not chosen to do those at this time.
No, we have not. But you will know.
I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. So can you tell us?
I'm sorry, am I talking over you? I'm sorry. I just wanted to know, you have to read these, because, for example, the tax freeze for the senior, you'll see that they must also meet the circuit breaker tax relief program in income trust thresholds. So you have to kind of read each one of them individual and kind of digest what is required for each of them.
Okay. So that's a tax freeze. So we could put in a tax freeze. And is there anything else that we can do that we haven't already done? Can you scroll through that and maybe pick it apart a little bit for us?
I think, yes, the only ones that, there's three on this, on this document that we do already, the others, the town has opted not to do. Some of which have come to the council before, and the council decided they did not want to pursue them.
But I think now they want to know which of these on this list could we do if they wanted to.
Okay, can you, John, do you have the ability to highlight, like in yellow, those three that we do?
I don't think.
I think you had the header highlighted.
Well, I was just kind of.
Oh, doing as it go along, okay.
Yeah.
Is this in our packet, just for clarifying?
No, no, I just pulled this up, and I'm going to send it out to you tomorrow.
Okay.
We had provided it back in August when we first discussed this.
Yep.
So Cindy, going on down from the tax freeze for seniors, is there anything, like, can you tell us what each thing is?
Mary, I might defer to Mary, she might be able to help me out with this, because we don't currently use them, so I'm not as knowledgeable about these as she might be.
Sure. John, pick a, pick a spot where you'd like me to start.
We just did this one, so the next on the list would be this one.
Sure. So we, the, the state already offers relief for homeowners who are seniors or have permanent disabilities. And I, I think that's probably included in your packet under the Town of Groton Property Tax Relief, Rent Relief for the Elderly and Totally Disabled. This is an income-based program. Right now, for the 2019 grand list, we had 84 applicants. For the 2020 grand list, we expect to have about 120 applicants. This is a program that the state mandates for everyone. And right now, the state is not reimbursing for it. What John has highlighted could be an additional benefit for that existing program. So you would be adding on to it. And you would really be revisiting, I believe, the income and the amount of tax relief that's granted. So it would be something over and above what the state already mandates that the town provides. So the next exemption for homeowners with disability, right now, we already provide the $1,000 assessment reduction for anyone who has shown us that they are permanently disabled. The municipalities have the option of providing an additional exemption of up to $1,000 under that same disability program. The next exemption for a special tax levied, I'm not quite sure what that means, I'm going to guess that's probably a district tax.
I would think so, yeah.
And then the next is, we already, the state requires that we already provide a $3,000 assessment reduction for individuals who have provided documentation that they are legally blind. This program allows the municipality to adopt an additional $2,000 exemption to that $3,000, what we call blind exemption. And I don't know, so the next is relief for firefighters, emergency personnel. That's not something I'm not all that familiar with, John. If you scroll down a little bit more, does, is that where the veteran programs come into play? Yeah, so you get into the.
And here's the one we'll be talking about in a bit.
Yeah, yeah. And then the next programs are, I think this document really talks a little bit about what the towns already provide under the state mandated programs, but they touch on the individual additional benefits that the towns can opt for.
Counselor Franco, does that answer your questions?
It does, thank you so much.
And all the statutory references are in this document as well.
So you've said that we had that in August, I think? And then, Mr. Burt, you said you will send this out to us again. I see the blue links for the Connecticut General Statutes on multiple paragraphs here. Counselor Melendez, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I would just too like to state that my father is a veteran. I am unaware if he participates in any of these programs. But discussing these exemptions, I would, I'd be willing to support any of them if there was a motion on the floor. So thank you.
Counselor Melendez, if your father is a resident of Groton, please have him contact our office.
Okay, yes, he is, thank you.
All right, I did just, I did just email this document to everyone.
Thank you. I'm going to ask a couple of questions here, please. Earlier, I don't remember if it was Director Landry or Ms. Gardner that was discussing when the town adopted one of these local options, we increased it, I can't remember what you said, if it went up to 10 or up to 20 on one of the exemptions. And you said it was voted. Now, when you say it's voted, it was voted by the council, or is this something that has to go to the public on referendum?
No, I believe it's handled through council resolution.
Okay. So then it is something that this council could do if we so chose to, to take this on. I don't know how, what the pleasure of the council is at this point. There is a lot of information in this document that Mr. Burt has on the screen for us right now, and I don't know how you want to tackle this, if you want to, you know, individually digest this, or if you want to keep going bit by bit here. So I will look for some input from the council. And I see Counselor Burt has her hand up. You have the floor.
Thank you. We also offer a tax relief for veterans on property, like their cars as well, am I correct?
Yes, that's correct. Basically, the veterans exemption is the same exemption, and we typically apply it to real estate first. And if there's a balance, we'll apply it towards motor vehicles, or if the property owner doesn't own real estate, we'll apply the whole thing to motor vehicles.
Motor vehicles, okay. Yeah, because I, I'm familiar with that program, because I have benefited from that program as a military spouse. And so we didn't own property at the time, lived in military housing, but I remember the benefit in having to file everything. So that's something else. Now, these forms are all online on the website?
The, the information is online, but we don't put the forms online, because they are, we have to review income documents. And if someone doesn't file an income tax return, we have to review all their individual savings accounts or retirement account balances, not, not equity balances, but what their income is. And it gets very detailed. We're more like CPA sometimes. So we prefer to take the applications in person in the office.
Gotcha. Another part of the packet was the tax abatement for individuals determined to be poor and unable to pay. I don't see the income on that section.
Melissa, would you like to speak to that one?
And the poor and unable to pay is the, the state name?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So if a person files for the first time, it does go by income. It would start at Human Services to verify their income limit. We do have an application that was approved by council resolution in February 5th of 2002, that we follow.
Okay. And so what is the income limits?
I believe it's the federal. I don't know what a Human Services use for their income limits. Cindy, do you know that information?
Yeah, I'm looking, the, and the paperwork, the, the little flyer that was included in your packet says, "All sources must be documented and not exceed the current poverty threshold as defined by the United Department of Health and Human Services." I don't know what that dollar amount is today. We could find out from Human Services, get that information to you.
Okay. And, and the name of this, the poor and unable to pay, does that come from the state, or is that something?
Yes, so it's State Statute 12-124, Abatement of Taxes and Interest. And then right in the state statute, it says, "May abate the taxes or interest on delinquent taxes or both assessed by their respective communities upon such person as are poor and unable to pay." That's not, you know, a terminology that we use, but that is in the state statute terminology.
Okay. Because it's highlighted on the screen, it says, "Abatement of Taxes for the Poor." So is there any way that we could update our form and just make it say that and not poor and unable to pay? Or are we, we have to put that quote in there?
Well, I could update it to say, "Abatement of Taxes and Interest," but people are going to think that anybody would eligible, but it really is based on income. So I think that's.
So is it possible that it could state something like, "Abatement of Taxes for Income-Based"? I don't know, I just, I would love to see, just a starting point, as I reviewed this, I'd love to see this, that, that line just updated. It's kind of, I find it to be offensive. And if we don't have to have that quote in there, I would love to see that updated to start.
Yeah, I can just update it to say, just the title of the statute.
I mean, I, I can't speak for the other counselors, but I just think the poor and unable to pay, if it doesn't have to be there, I just would love to see that. When I looked online and I saw that, it just doesn't look really nice, and we have our emblem on there, and it's just, I don't know, I think we can come across a little bit nicer with our wording with that, just to maybe ease the already insecurity that's there. But I'd love to see those guidelines for what those, those incomes for that, that, the folks who fall within that. My other page that I was, I had a quick question about, was the page 55 from my packet, it's the one that says, "The Town of Groton Property Tax Rent Relief for the Elderly and Totally Disabled Veterans," and it has an income guideline, page 55.
Yes, that, that would be from the assessor's office.
Right. And those are the current guidelines? Has that changed in any years? Or, so this is, comes from the state, the 42 for married and the 35 for single?
Those are not the current guidelines. The current guidelines are on the website. I think the current, the guidelines that are on the website are the 2019 grand list. We actually just put an IT Help Desk ticket in today to update it to the 2020, because those came out recently. The program just opened up February 1st, so we're in the process of updating all of our documents. So you'll see the new income limits up on the website within the next day or so.
Okay, that would be helpful, thank you. I think that was the only thing that I had. Yeah, that's all I have for now, thank you.
Director Landry, did you wish to speak on this issue?
I was just wanting to say that I was trying to help Melissa out with what we currently call abatement of taxes for the poor, for poor and unable to pay. The Legislative Office of Research calls that abatement of taxes for the poor. You can see that on the OLR right here. I think we would have to be careful about changing it to, you know, just referencing the stat- the statute. I'm not sure that people would understand that, but I do understand and appreciate Council Board along's comment about it, the way it reads, "Poor and Unable to Pay." But we can look into that, about maybe modifying that. I just don't know, since this was adopted by the council so long ago, if we'll have to come back to the council to, because it would change all of the guidelines in the application.
Okay. I appreciate that. Like I said, I don't know if the application has to change necessarily, but I've just, the wording, I would, that's all I'd be looking to change. Is that something I have to make a referral for, Mayor?
We can update it.
I'm sorry?
We can go ahead and update it.
Yeah, I think they heard you, and they will do what they can, as best they can to make it meet the general statute, so.
Perfect.
Thank you. Any other first-time speakers before I go to second time? Councilor Franco?
I'd like to make a motion to receive further information for local senior tax freeze, increased local veterans tax, disabled exemption increase, and seniors exemption increase in relation to legislation the town can pass, as well as information in relation to potential decrease in revenue for the town and the stats in relation to approximate community reach.
I was just gonna ask you to type it for us. All right, so can everybody take a look at the chat, please, for Counselor Franco's motion? So really, you're just looking for more information. It's not really, not really a motion to do anything, you're looking for that specific information, correct?
Yes, I'm not looking to pass anything tonight, I'm looking for motion, a motion to look at specific items in relation to legislation, how it affects revenue, and how many people in our community do they, could it potentially breach, and what their estimates would be.
I would say, it's the pleasure of the council, but I don't know that we need a motion for that. I think if the council is okay with that, you've been very specific in your request, and we could just ask if the council is amenable for staff to come back with that information. Is there any objection from the council to request that this information be garnered from town staff? I think it's simpler this way, if we just ask them to do it. Does anybody object to the request for information here?
Nope.
And I think this goes to a lot of what Counselors of Perry was looking for as well, so. All right, so if there's no objection to this, then Mr. Burt and Director Landry and Ms. Gardner, Mr. Burt, did you grab that from the chat, or?
I do have it, yes.
You have it? Okay. All right, so then we will look for information to come back to us on these specific items. And that looks like that's acceptable to the council. So we'll hear back from you. So then this, this item, 2024-321, stays active and stays on the agenda until we hear more from town staff then. And I think that's what Counselors of Perry wanted. All right, very good. So we are on to 5F 2020 16-2 Tax Abatement Program for Surviving Spouse of a Police Officer. So this is the second of the referrals. This one does not have a motion, but there is a recommendation from staff, a specific recommendation, whereas the last item did not have a recommendation. But if you take a look on page 62, please, in your packet, 62 in your packet, the staff recommendation, staff does not recommend creation of an ordinance based on an individual request. So I will turn this over to, would this be Ms. Landry or Ms. Gardner?
I'll be taking this one.
Thank you, Mr. Burt. You have the floor.
Not that they might not be chiming in. Yeah, we've looked at this before, the, we have received requests from, first of all, I'll start off with Connecticut Legislature allows municipalities to adopt by ordinance a program to abate taxes for the surviving spouse of fallen firefighters and police officers who die during the line of duty. We received requests from someone that was living in the city, who was receiving that benefit through the fire district, the City Fire District, which is the city, how the city taxes, moving to the Mystic area, and requested the town adopt a similar ordinance. Going in, if you look, based on our last conversation, I, right after that meeting, I had talked to other attorneys and responded to you with answers to questions that were asked, based on what I learned from the attorney and what your input was, in case you wondered when, I drafted the draft ordinance, and just kind of taking you through it, if you look on page, I'm in the smaller packet, if you look at the first page of the ordinance, adoption of ordinance regarding tax abatement program for surviving spouses, you have that?
Yep.
Okay. First of all, just, I was gonna point out the highlights, the, under firefighter definition, you'll see that it's for any valid fire department located within the Town of Groton, because the direction sort of before is, let's say you moved from somewhere, your spouse died in another municipality, and then you move here, kind of the direction was, it should be limited to those within, that had served within the town. Same thing with the police officers. There's the definition of surviving spouse, which we went over quite a bit last time. Now, you can set up to 100% tax abatement. I've got this draft at 50%. It is up to council, though, what they want to do with that, if they want to do something. Just to point out, reminder, going on to the next page, if surviving spouse remarries, the benefit ceases as of the next tax year. And then there are some income requirements in here. I put this in based on input. It's not required, but I put it in based on some of the input. I looked at some of our other programs. So the annual income may not be more than 400% of the federal poverty level for a single-person family household. I don't have those latest numbers, but annually, they would have to apply every, by November 1st each year, the surviving spouse should complete and file with the assessor the application. So really, just looking for direction, are you interested in doing an ordinance? Do you want to continue with this?
All right, and again, the recommendation from staff, Mr. Burt, was what?
Yeah, recommendation from both myself and Cindy is not to proceed based on one request, but it's totally a policy decision and completely up to the council.
All right, is there any discussion on this item? Council Boardline, you have the floor?
Thank you. Thank you for those, that information. In the packet that was not in our, the packet that was presented that we got in August that was not in our packet tonight, there was a section that talked about emergency personnel in there, think like EMS.
Yeah, those aren't allowed. Anything that, everything that was asked at the last meeting of the attorney, so they couldn't be allowed, they were removed.
I'm sorry, say that again?
It's strictly for police and fire, not EMS.
Right.
By state statute, yeah.
Right, so that line in there, that was in there, that, in that packet, that's no longer?
Correct, after, after having the attorney review.
Okay, because it's not X-ed out in our packet, that's why, I just want to make sure, because I read. Okay, so we should cross that one off when we?
Where's that at on there? Can you tell me?
I was asking you to bring it back up.
I didn't have this one up on the screen. Oh, you mean from last time. Yeah, the current one that's validated by the attorney took out anything that wasn't allowed, so the one in your packet tonight's the correct one. Any of the questions asked, if they're not included in here, means we can't do it. And I did give a full rundown of those questions after the last meeting, and I'm sorry, I don't have those questions and answers on me, but yes, you can't do the EMS, but you should strictly look at tonight's packet and tell me if there's something you're seeing on there.
Right, but the thing that you had up on the screen before with the little lighthouse wherever at the top that you said was sent out in August? With the list of all the programs that we were reviewing tonight?
That's, oh, you're talking about, oh, you're just talking about what the statute, okay. I thought you meant the ordinance presented in August, the, okay, I'm sorry. Give me a second, give me one second.
Yep, talked about EMS and other things, I just wanted to reference that in reference to what you proposed here.
Hey, John, this is Mary. It's page four of the Local Option Property Tax Relief Program for Homeowners Report.
Hold on a sec. I stand corrected, that does show it'd be more versatile, they've expanded on and gave their own definitions to it. Hold on a sec.
So, Ms. Gardner, are you in the packet that we have, or are you in the OLR document that, Mr. Burt, this one, this is the OLRs, is what you're talking about?
That's what I'm talking about.
That's what I thought.
Now, there's a separate, there's a separate section for the surviving spouses of firefighters.
Oh, that's not it, sorry. Oh, here it is, there it is, yep.
Yeah.
I don't know if that's...
It does say EMT on that, though.
Pardon me?
It does say officer, firefighter, or EMT.
Right, that's what I wanted some clarifying on, because as I was trying to...
Oh, I, sorry, now I remember, the discussion last time was, those aren't municipal employees, you know, they don't work for government, and I think that was kind of the direction, was not to include them last time, but it's up to the council.
So, okay, so let me, I just ask again, so how does this document relate to what we can do then?
Okay, you could expand it to add EMT, you could do up to 100% of abatement, any percent you want, zero to 100, well, you wouldn't do it to zero, but, and then you can take out the, you could change or take out the income limits. I mean, obviously, any definition could be rewrote or anything else, but those are just, you know, that's not substantive at this point.
So based on this writing here, it doesn't have to just be police officer, we could, we could do more with it than what was proposed tonight?
If you do police officer, firefighter, and then you could add an EMT.
Right, okay.
But last time, the direction was not to, that's what I'm trying to remember back to August.
Yeah. Okay, I'm just trying to understand, I guess I need some more information on this section. It looks like this expands further, right, to read the full statute?
This is Mary. Yeah, you, you want to read the statute, and, John, you touched on something earlier about maybe the reason this wasn't explored so much in the past was because these are not municipal employees? Was that, was that...
Right, that was, that was the direction, if I remember correctly, from the council last time, because they're not municipal employees.
This is Cindy, can I also add something? I think when we had the meeting, I think this was actually November, Chuck Stevens had also, that also included the letter, and I think you included it this time, he raised several points, he was not in favor of an ordinance for this. But I think some of the changes to the original came from the counselors reading that letter.
Counselor Borlon, do you have further questions?
So, can I just add one thing? Surprisingly, there's, that's a tiny section in law, that's really all it says. It says, the actual law just says, "The legislative body of a, legislative body of any municipality may establish by ordinance a program to abate all or a portion of the property taxes due..."
If we wanted to, to look at this in that full capacity.
Right, you couldn't add any other categories, but yes, you could add the EMT.
Okay. All right, well, thank you. And that other section, so is there any other sections that pertain to this group or first responders population in this packet that we have?
Oh, in, in this whole sheet, you mean?
Yes.
What was the one, Cindy, what's the...
The other section, because I just want to look at the full scope of all...
For active, you can do it for active and retired volunteers.
Right. Uh huh, and is this one as straightforward as it, it looks here, doesn't look like there's any expanding documents for...
There's more down here, there's more down here.
Okay.
Oh, it didn't, or, say, okay, that, that allows you to do inter-local ones. So it's like a $2,000, FY 22, $2,000 exemption?
This is Mary. The one difference between this type of a program compared to what we administer in the assessor's office is, most of what we administer in the assessor's office talks in terms of assessment dollars, which are multiplied by the mill rate to get to the benefit.
Oh, this is actually property taxes.
This is actually property taxes. And so that, that is a difference.
John, can you scroll up and let me see the beginning of this? Thank you. I'd have to go look it up, if I'm not mistaken, and Mary, you may remember this, I think that when this first came up, the town opted not to pursue this. Do you remember that?
Feel like I sort of do remember it.
Yeah, I think that there might have been a referral to the...
Well, it'd be weird to do it for active volunteers and actually active personnel, you know, full-time personnel.
I think what the, for the town is, we don't have town firefighters or emergency personnels like the city has. I think that might have been the reason why they did not move forward with it.
And I've been hesitating on pointing that out, that the city has a fire department, but the town does not. You know, they both have police, but I can see, I can see that there's a difference there.
Counselor Borlon, do you have other questions?
Nope, that clarified some things, thank you. I'll do some more research on that. Thank you so much.
Counselors of Perry, you have the floor?
There's one thing that I'd like to call everyone's attention to, is in the line of duty injuries by statute in Connecticut, the Heart and Hypertension Act, any police officer or corrections officer or firefighter who has a heart attack, a stroke, or hypertension has a work-related injury. And of course, if they die from the heart attack or the hypertension, then it's a work-related death. This, this, an ordinance would be more far-reaching than simply looking to help the family of a police officer who was shot in the line of duty, or who was hit by a car while directing traffic, or some other traumatic event that caused his death. Just something we should consider, because the incidence of heart attacks, stroke, and high blood pressure, they're the highest cause of death in the nation. The other thing on a more closely related issue is, the author of the letter requesting that we enact this policy or ordinance, to my understanding, lived in the city of Groton, and was covered by their exemption for taxes while she was in the city. However, since then, she remarried, and she and her husband moved to Mystic. I may be wrong, but that's what I've been told.
And I can't verify that. I asked that directly and was told she was not remarried, but I had heard the same thing.
Yeah. So I, I, you know, just wondering whether or not we should follow the recommendations of staff to begin with. I yield the floor.
Thank you. Let me check, Ms., Director Landry, your hand was up earlier, and I'm not sure if you needed to add something else, or if it was a leftover from prior.
Oh, it was a leftover, thank you for asking.
I have a question.
Yes, Counselor Parker.
So, the tax exempt was granted under the city of Groton for her property tax, does that mean that she still paid town of Groton property taxes?
Yes, she did.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Ober, you have the floor.
Thank you. I think that we should work at drawing up an ordinance that would have something for people that do work in a dangerous field for the town, and have something that if there's... there should be a traumatic happening, that we would do what we could for the family and, and the, and the tax situation, probably like what the city has, but I think it can first, it can only be people that work directly for the town, and their surviving spouses, and I, I, I think that would limit pretty much what we're really going to be covering. The other thing is, I really don't remember, but I think there was some change in that hypertension, what they would do for somebody that did have, you know, a situation from that, because I know it got pretty out of hand for a while, and they put some new regulations on it, but it's been, it's been quite a few years since they did that, but I think this woman is deserving of what she's asking for, and I think should it, we have the unfortunate circumstance of having it to happen to another one of our people that do so much to take care of us, that work for the town, we should have a, we should have a policy to go by, and I don't think, though, at this point, we're quite ready to put it together in some kind of verbiage, so, I would, I would suggest that this be continued, and that all of us could read through the information we have now, and, and try to arrive with John's and the mayor's assistance at an ordinance that would be very fair. As Joe says, I yield the floor.
Thank you, are there any other first-time counselors before we go back to second speakers? I just have to, I can only see a row of hands at a time, so let me scroll, it looks like you have the floor, Councilor Borlon.
Thanks. I just had a quick question for Counselors of Perry, I know you said something about correction officers, and, but, as this is like, the synopsis of this is written, it just says police officers, and as Counselor Obrey had stated, people that work for the town, so I'm just not sure how, how do we, I, I mean, if we were to, like, how would that encompass, like, correction officers that maybe live in the town but don't work in the town, it wouldn't be able to, would it?
No, wouldn't, I had specifically asked the attorney.
Yeah, I know that, that's one of the things that Counselors of Perry had said about correction, so I was just, so it has to be working for the municipality based on the statutes that are given to us from the state?
Well, you, it just needs to be a police officer, a firefighter, or E M T.
So, there's no way to make it an emergency responder?
No, I specifically checked on that, yeah.
Or work in a hazard duty zone?
No, it's those three titles, that's it.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Counselor Franco, you have the floor?
Thank you, I recall the conversation last time was, if we start with this, where do we end, because this is for police and E M T and firefighters, which, great respect for them, but then there was the questions of, well, what happens if it's one of our public works guys, and they were, like, mowing the lawn on the side of a highway and got hit by a car, I mean, that's where I believe we got into the weeds of, well, where do we, where could we, you know, where does this end, and who, would it be right to pick out some of our town, people that work for our town and not others that work for our town, and I think that's where we had gotten into the weeds, and I do believe that's where we had, sort of had a conversation where we said, maybe this isn't something to actually move forward on, and I, I think I recall it the same way others have as well. I understand firefighters and police and E M Ts put themselves in great risk, and extremely respectful of them, but I think also, and I'm not sure, because I don't think we've talked to, to those departments, what, is there additional insurance for them if they do die in the line of duty for some type of reason, I mean, aren't there larger benefits if it happens while they're in the line of duty?
Not in terms of, I mean, each contract calls for a certain amount of, I just, I don't want to talk, Cindy, do you know offhand, I didn't think there was, but I could be wrong.
I think that probably the police contract talks about in the line of duty, I don't think that any other contracts would specify that, I'd have to look at them specifically to be sure, but I think the police might have something that specifically addresses if they were to pass away in the line of duty.
Yeah, I, I just think there's not quite enough information regarding this, and I do have, I think, an issue with it, I, I just don't know how many people would this pertain to, I would be, would be creating legislation and tax abamance for maybe two people in our whole town, I'm not exactly sure, so, but once again, I have complete respect for those professions, and I'm, I'm just not sure this is right to move forward at the moment.
Any other first-time speakers before we go to second time? And I'm not seeing any other hands, so, Counselor Ober, you have the floor?
Well, again, I think we have a lot of questions here that we can't really answer, I think maybe we need to include in this conversation our human resource director that might be able to advise us as to what benefits there are for other departments if something tragic was to happen, but I think it comes back to their job description, and I'm sure in the job description for the police and the fire, we wouldn't have firemen, but whomever falls into this category, there must be in, it must be in their job description that they are working in a dangerous situation, and I would certainly, I have no problem with a little more clarification moving forward to having something for the remaining spouses of, of an appropriate employee of the town, but we need to get a little clarification on that, and I would think that our human resource department could probably give us great guidance on that, and so that we could move forward and do something that hopefully would be beneficial to those few that do have something this tragic happen. I yield the floor.
Thank you. I just have to check and see if anybody wants to speak, Counselor Borlon has spoken twice, the council, though, can allow for a third time, if it's, if there's no objection, I can recognize Counselor Borlon to speak for a third time, is there any objection? Counselor Borlon, you have the floor?
I just had a quick question, too, is there any state guidelines on what defines a spouse, I think we, you know, need to recognize, you know, you know, a spouse to, some is not a spouse to others, there's same-gender marriage, you know, you know, what, what if something like this was to be presented, is, is there any strict state guidelines that defines a spouse, or do we have an option to open that up, because I think it's important that we recognize all the gender equalities?
The attorney researched that and said it has to be married, whoever has to be married, regardless of genders or anything else, but-
So, as long as they have a civil union, or they would count?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay, because I, that would be important to me, because I think it would be unfair not to recognize the spouse, and it's full term in today's age, thank you.
Sure, definitely.
All right, council, we need some direction here, oh wait, there's a hand, let me see, Director Landry?
Yes, I just wanted to add, when the, we talk about having human resources in, and what the other union contracts may provide in, in the event of the death of an employee, this particular statute, statute only is talking about a surviving spouse for police, fire, E M T, so what we may have in a public works contract, or a steel workers' contract, doesn't really apply to the ordinance for this.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, council-
Just interjecting, not that you couldn't discuss that as a separate item, that's something that could be accomplished, but just as part of this.
So, so, council, the, the staff recommendation was not to proceed with this, what we need now, though, is we need consensus from the council, what you want to do, I've heard several of you are looking for further information, I've heard, I'm hearing a mixed bag, so, what would be the easiest way, how many would like to follow staff recommendation and not pursue this? I see one, one hand, okay, two hands, three, four, all right, and five, okay, so there's five that chose not to pursue this, all right, very good, so thank you very much for all your time on this, Director Landry, Ms. Gardner, Mr. Burt as well, all right, so we are on to review of agenda items, Mr. Burt, do you have anything for us for the agenda items?
I do not.
Okay, I don't, are there other business counselors? Counselor Franco?
Thank you, so I have two things, the first is, I would like to make an announcement that the town of Groton, well, it's in the town of Groton, or the city of Groton, Groton Little League registration is now open, and the fee for spring is $1, so anybody who wants to sign up, please get out there and sign up for baseball, because spring is coming, and I'd like to make a referral to the safety committee. I'd like to make a referral to the safety committee to invite the Boquonic Bridge Fire Department to discuss matters related to the pilot funding, as well as training center located behind the town annex, and I would like some counselors to back me on this, so the referral can go forward.
Will you be sending that via email to us so that we can disperse it to the rest of the council?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much, so counselors, look for that, please. Any other, other business?
Is there, if there's enough people tonight to vote on that, can we just get the two tonight and move it on, instead of clogging the emails?
It's the purview of the council.
It's up to Counselor Franco, since it's her referral item, I just think it's, sometimes it's better to catch people in live time than chase them down on the emails, I know it's hard sometimes, so.
Well, she already said she'll email it, I'm sorry?
I will definitely send the email, but if anybody would like to just give me my, their two referrals tonight publicly, I'm all for it.
I would support your referral to the safety committee.
I'll support it, Melendez.
Very good, so I, we still need that in writing, though, to add it to things, please, so if you could just send the email to Mr. Burton, myself, that would be most helpful, thank you, and if you could note in it that it was Borlon and Melendez, I believe, correct? Counselors Borlon and Melendez that support the referral, I believe, very good.
I'm Bum Gardner as well.
Bum Gardner as well, very good, all right, anyone else? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by Parker, is there a second?
Erkan.
Zepari, moved by Parker, seconded by Zepari, all those in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, so moved unanimously at 9:37, thank you, everybody, have a good night, and those of you at home, if you're over 65, get registered for your vaccine, please, as Counselor He recommended to us, good night, all, be safe.
Good night, good night, John boy.